Call the August Gettysburg Stormwater Authority Meeting to order. Seeing as I just found out I'm running the meeting, I certainly don't have any remarks, opening remarks. Nobody gave me any announcements. So I guess we just have our approvals to take care of. So we need a motion, and we'll do all three of them like we always do, a motion to approve the agenda, most approved bills and payrolls, and a motion to approve the June ninth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes. If somebody would like to make a motion and...
I'll move acceptance of those reports.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion care. Public comment? Don't think so. Special presentation by Deborah English, Hazardous Waste Pickup Presentation.
Okay. We, a while back, went to the Cumberland County Hazardous Waste Pickup. We were thinking about doing something here at the borough. It's quite a substantial setup. We would need room for, well, this is kind of... Okay. Let me go to the next one. They have to, the company that kind of sponsors this or has all the DEP permits and regulations, bring all the materials, all of the staffing, they bring the boxes to sort, they bring all the carts, cones, barrels, everything to collect the materials. They, this was actually a rainy day when we were there, but you, you can see the setup they have. We do, so coming in, they have four lanes. This may be potentially a problem in the borough because we would need an area that's large enough to facilitate that many folks coming in. I think they do, I think the numbers are in here. I had looked at this in a little bit, but anyway, so, kind of, let me see where we are. They have three lanes, three? Yeah, three lanes. So basically, when the cars come in, the staff, their staff, we would direct traffic or have volunteers to help as well. So they bring the vehicles in, put the, the customers don't get out of the car. They put the materials in the shopping carts, which they also bring, put it on a weigh machine. So this is like a square five-by-five weigh station. I don't know if they have one or we'd have to purchase that. I think they run around eighteen hundred dollars. But if it's something we're gonna do a couple of times a year, once a year, it might be something we could invest in. So it's pretty simple, and they just build a little ramp to get in there, and then they have a weigh station. So they weigh the material and charge the participants per pound, and... It's just another picture of that. And the company is MXI. So they used in a recycling conference we were just at, they were there and several other municipalities use them as well. The event was scheduled eleven to five. They do need, I think, two hours prior to getting there to set up. They had four hundred people signed up, and they do this, I think, quarterly. So they're a much larger area than we are, of course, but they handled about twenty people every fifteen minutes with the three lanes. So, I mean, we may be able to partner with a college if they have an area that might be able to back up that many cars. They also need room for two tractor-trailers. And then we would need, well, let me start where we are, I'm getting ahead of myself. The top three items collected, of course, the number one thing I think that's a main concern in our area is paint. The second one was household cleaners and pesticides. The average person brought in around eighty-eight pounds of material. They were charging seventy-five cents per pound. So that averaged around sixty-six dollars per person coming to the event, and again, they had four hundred people sign up, so they didn't seem to have a problem, you know, paying that, oops, sorry. And there are grants available, DEP, if you do the event, they pay you for part of the tonnage that you collect. And there is some also cost-sharing money from the Department of Agriculture for the pesticides. So you have to have that kind of separated. But there are some refunds or grant refunds based on the amount of material you collect. So we would need to set it up, a large space, which possibly could be GARA, a forklift. They can provide it, but then we have to rent it, and it's an extra cost. Do you have a forklifter, Skidstir with a forklift?
I have a Skidlo forklift.
Okay, so we might be able to use that. We would also need to provide a thirty-yard dumpster, which we could either rent, or they would provide. The scale, which we could purchase for rent. We ought, we'd need to inform the fire and police department, and they would have all the permits and personnel for that. So that's all I have there.
Do the, do the participants pay right on the site?
They pay on, like Cumberland County has a drop-off with the scale, so they have their recycling center open five days a week. So they do their recycling or anything you want to bring in, they weigh it and they pay per pound, they pay right there. So they have like a credit card machine to take care of that. So, the conference Karen and I were just at, MXI was there with some other folks, and they also have a program where we can have a pickup at the resident's house. So what they do is go online, register for the event. They can, I think it's like zero to ten pounds or ten to twenty-five pounds of whatever material you want to do. If we could, we could limit it to paint or, you know, whatever materials we want. I was thinking maybe just paint the first time, and they would get a bag. So then MXI would mail them a bag, they would have it listed in the area of how many pounds they were doing. They would prepay because we can set it up through Eventbrite, and we don't have to collect any money. And then they would have it scheduled through MXI, and then their folks who are certified to pick up those hazardous materials could just do a pickup in the area. So I think the first time that might be the easiest way to do it versus trying to pull in tractor-trailers and line up, you know, four hundred cars and things like that. Yes?
If we looked at partnering with Strabane, Cumberland...
I've asked them if we could.
Maybe the whole county, like they're doing it.
Yeah. I asked them if we could because we don't have a very large area, and they said we, they don't do that. Cumberland doesn't, so...
Cumberland doesn't? Cumberland Township or Cumberland County?
Cumberland County, sorry.
I thought there was a whole county over there, so...
So... They, I will double-check. We went to Cumberland County to their event, and they, I tried to talk to them about doing some type of joint venture, but they, they just said they...
Yeah, I don't want to be with them, I'm thinking Adams County.
Here, Adams County, yes. Well, they don't have anything set up, and I've tried to work with them on some other things. They, they don't always seem overly receptive.
I think Pat's referring to like Cumberland Township, Strabane Township that's around the borough.
That are already doing... Yeah, I could check, I don't think they have anything...
Am I right, Pat, or not?
Yeah, well, actually, it was a twofer. That was one thing, and then why stop there and do the whole county, because they're doing the whole county, so...
Right. I mean, it would be nice if Adams County maybe took the lead.
It's particularly important, well, everywhere, but here, you know, if they could sound our groundwater, we already have Superfund sites in the county, and it takes decades.
Yes.
And it's still clean, so...
Right. Well, yeah, I'm trying to find something, and I'd like to do something sooner than later. So I was thinking just to do the porch drop-off thing as a initial, see how receptive people are to that, and at least we can get some of the paint down. Then the other items on there, I can send you guys a list of those, but they take pretty much everything. Fluorescent tubes, batteries, antifreeze, paint, I mean, there's a whole list of stuff. Pool chemicals and things like that, some of the chemicals are a higher charge, so we just have to be careful because we don't want to overspend with, you know, our, our limited area of collection. Because it costs probably eighteen to twenty-two thousand dollars to have an event. So if we don't get enough folks signed up, then we have to pay the delta because there's a minimum for us to pay for them to come to do, to do the collection. But with the house drop-off, that might be an easier thing as a start, and it does the payment through that scheduled Eventbrite. I don't know if you've ever used that, but you can, you know, schedule, you pick a time, you pick the weight, and you prepay. Then we don't have all that, you know, to deal with.
What, what is the impetus to do this? Is the state telling us we need to do this?
They are not, but...
Or is it just because it's a good thing so people don't throw it in the trash, or...
And we're in our MS four ordinance and mandates, which we have to do public education and outreach.
Okay.
This also keeps these chemicals out of our storm drains and systems. So it's something that's not required to do, but it would be a good thing with the programs we have that are currently established in our requirements for the MS, MCMs and the MS four program.
Seems Pat's idea, though, that if we could collaborate with other townships or the whole county, if we're gonna go to the effort to do all this organization, we might as well...
It's just hard to figure who's gonna pay what and what amount, because it's very expensive. And then if you do the whole county and we end up with fifteen hundred cars, where do we put them? How do we organize it? Where's the locations? It's, it's a big event there, and, I mean, cars were backed up. I mean, they had the three lanes, so they could do probably a thirty to forty car...
Will you talk to the GMA? Because if they sound a drain in Cumberland Township...
Yeah, I, I haven't...
Or Strabane, and it ends up...
Right, absolutely. I mean, it would be nice, it's just, I, I don't, I mean, if they charged per pound...
I'm not trying to hold anything up, I'm just thinking, this could be a pileup project, but I think it's bigger than us.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I just wanted to get something started and get it moving forward because it's a, it's a big thing to orchestrate and get people on board and figure out how we're gonna pay for it. Because the first way to do it was maybe if you guys or Stormwater wanted to cost-share some of the, the cost of it. Because if it's gonna be just for, I think I calculated around three hundred folks coming, possibly two fifty, which was the minimum we need to do the event just in Gettysburg, then how would we pay for that? Do we want it free for the residents? Do we want to bill them? Do we want them to pay per pound? Do we want them to pay a flat rate? I mean, how do you guys, just think about that. You know, I mean, some people probably don't care to pay, other people may not, and, you know, we don't want it going in the storm drains. So I don't know how you want to handle it.
Well, when I, when I first approached this over our council, I was hoping we wouldn't have to charge because of all the people in this town that are on fixed income...
Right.
And all the boxes of crap that are in these old garages and these old buildings. But the big problem I don't see being addressed here is everything you've talked about here, you know what you're getting rid of. But like in my father-in-law's garage, there's at least seven containers that I don't know what it is.
Right. And you could, is...
I mean, I, I'm...
If they're liquid or like a dry chemical, like a fertilizer or something like that, if you have an idea...
I, I know exactly what you're saying, but also, all my years in the fire department tells me that what's labeled motor oil may not be motor oil.
Right. So, yeah, that, that's a problem too, and I'd have to talk to MXI to see how they would handle that. But they do take fuels, gasolines, diesel, old, old fuels, so...
Here again, they know what they're getting.
Right, right.
Yeah. They do, they do some, they do also do, they can do some explosives.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have the fire, well, Fire Company and Police Department, there's like...
Yeah, because they're, they actually require a hazmat team to be on site when you're doing it.
But if you don't want to charge...
There'll be another, there's risen a hazmat team in Gettysburg.
Yeah. And if you don't want to charge, then we have to limit it to borough residents. We can't go outside the county. So that's why I wasn't sure how you wanted to handle it. But the porch pickup thing with just paint for the first time, I think, would be a nice way to kind of bring in some of the chemicals and materials that would be collected that could maybe...
I don't know how much paint you're gonna get, though. Most people have gotten rid of paint.
You think?
They're dry.
Yeah, they let it dry out, put it in garbage.
Okay. Because I...
I think the, I think we should definitely get, Gettysburg Municipal Authority. I, I was on a committee down there for...
This is a list of all the stuff they collect, they're highest ranked by, I think, four years or four months, but we just have one copy there, if you want to pass it on.
Yeah, they, they had to go through DEP to have a source water protection program, and our water doesn't come from the borough. All the wells that they have are out...
Outside.
Right.
Cumberland and Strabane, so if we want to protect our water, we need to have it in Strabane.
Absolutely.
And the Gettysburg Municipal Authority has already gone around, because I was on a committee that did it, and identified all the, there was potential sources of contamination, and we included these things in it. And they are required to upkeep, keep updating that, that storm water or source water protection plan. So I think we should definitely give them a call and get them involved.
Oh, absolutely.
Because it's really closer to their thing than our storm water. Yeah, our storm water, because it's gone, but that goes down...
But if we don't want to charge residents, we can't go outside the borough. So, because if we're paying for that, we can't offer free anything or, or pay for folks outside the borough town limits.
Well, it, it doesn't have to be free. Maybe we could do a little bit less, you know? The other thing, the other problem with free is people tend not to pay attention to the rules. When it's free, they just throw everything together and get rid of it. If they're paying, they'll be a little bit more...
Correct, and I, I kind of think that's a good way to offset the, the cost.
Yeah, if they're paying, they'll be a little bit more careful about what they're throwing in there to get rid of.
Yes. Just something to think about, how you want to orchestrate it, what materials we want to collect. Because like I said, the average cost is around seventy-five cents a pound, but some of the chemicals that could be explosive or maybe fuels might cost more to get rid of. I know he said pool chemicals were more expensive, so then that would add the cost. And then who's gonna front that is Gettysburg Stormwater Authority. I mean, we would get some money back, but we do have to, I think, have fifty percent down at a minimum cost to, to have the event for them to come out.
I still think it's a shame the county won't address this.
I will talk to them, and I've also talked to the college, because they have a nice, large facility, and they have a sustainability group with recycling. So I was hoping maybe they could help spearhead it for an Adams County event on the college property.
Could you add, talking to Mark Geis to your list of people to talk to? Because I really, they already have the infrastructure to require this type of protection.
Right, but you're saying for the location or just...
I'm saying for the clientele that you're gonna get, because the people that are gonna contaminate our water that we drink, they don't live in the borough.
Right.
They live in Cumberland Township and Strabane.
Right.
I think there's a special way to collect farm chemicals. I think they're collecting differently.
And they're a different cost, too.
Well, there's a couple of programs with the Department of Agriculture, because when I first got the highway department, we had bags of stuff that needed to go. That we used to use in town to kill things and spray things. And they actually came here and picked them up, but those days are probably going now too. But here again, that's another reason why this, this really should be a county operation, but...
But nobody's doing anything around it.
And you're not gonna get county cooperation, let's face it, they...
I've been trying to light some fires and get folks involved, but it's very difficult.
It might not be a bad idea if she went to the cog, was it the Adams County...
Adams County, yeah.
Yeah, and do the same presentation in front of, because that's like a fair slice of all that.
They, they get a lot of participation when I was representative there, and then, I mean, almost every municipality shows up for that, not every month, but for every two months, whatever they're running now. But, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of municipal participation in the Adams County cog, more so than people think.
And I'm meeting with the college, I think, in two weeks about it to see if they be able to kind of help spearhead the event or maybe bring in Adams County as a whole. We just have to figure out where we have the most space and how we're gonna fund it.
The other thing you gotta watch during the school year now, because...
We're not gonna do it during their school year, we would do it during off-season.
Yeah, be in the summer.
Yeah.
And that's the other thing, school districts are represented in the cog too.
Yeah. And some of the school areas might be the elementary school possibly, but like I said, we need room for two tractor-trailers if we're gonna have a physical event where they drop it off, or we could try the porch pickup. And they don't have to do just paint, they can do multiple items just for the borough residents to get some of that cleaned up. But the Adams County as a whole is gonna be a much bigger animal to rein in, so...
Well, I'm glad to see somebody's doing something, I mean...
I'm working on it.
We've been kicking this around for like twenty years, so...
Well, it's gonna happen, I will guarantee you we will have something happen in the next twelve months.
Okay, very good.
I think it's a very important topic, and there's other chemicals that are...
Absolutely.
That are getting, like PFOS and forever chemicals, I mean, all that stuff, if you read anything, there's articles about all that stuff. And I would be okay if we did like a pileup project, but it's bigger than this committee or authority, I believe.
Yeah.
I just gotta get it started. I gotta start the ball rolling, and then I'm hoping maybe other folks might...
Well, make, we have to make sure there's enough publicity.
Right.
You know, that's something, like the Watershed Alliance puts out a monthly, you know, is about protecting our water. We, we need to spread the word.
Absolutely.
I think cost is prohibitive, so we could figure out a way to make it less so than...
I haven't heard of cost yet, right, because...
Well, to do around two hundred and fifty to three hundred people, it's like twenty-two thousand dollars just for the borough residents.
Wow.
But we would get some cost-share money back from DEP based on the tonnage collected. And then if we have agricultural fertilizers and things like that, the Department of Ag will also do some kind of refund, grant, cost-share funds, depending on what you collect, so...
Those would be obvious questions if you're trying to get other people involved, because the first question is how much it costs.
But the more people you have, the more people you have, and we can't, like if we get fifteen hundred people, it could be eighty thousand dollars.
I understand.
If Cumberland County said they would come and talk to us if they were more interested, the people that brand the Cumberland County...
Yeah, the MXI folks can give us information, and we have most of that.
The municipal people from Cumberland County.
Yeah, I'm sure they would. But, I mean, they're just, basically, we need to figure out how to pay for it, that's the problem. And a, and a location for it. The rest of it will fall into place because we have the information. And the sheet I passed around has one, the schedule of what's been dropped off in pounds, so you can see what the, most of the folks at those events are bringing in. So we can kind of go off base, you know, on the information on that to see what folks are, are having issues with and what they need to drop off, because they've been tracking it, you know, quarterly for years, so... Kind of gives you a really good idea of what people have. I mean, there's always gonna be somebody outside that list that has some odd stuff or something maybe they can't even take, so... But they had, it's, it was so organized, and the MXI folks are, are wonderful to deal with, but we just have to figure out how we're gonna pay for it and where it would be, and if we can do it as a, a larger event. But Adams County as a whole, it would be quite huge. We'd probably have to schedule folks and then turn folks away after the first one, because I can't imagine we wouldn't overfill the first event, so...
Well, the other problem in Adams County is you have so many rental properties and...
Yeah.
A lot of those people don't, they pay their rent and they don't want to be bothered.
Right.
So, if I can chime in here, and I'm not an expert in this field, but as a municipal engineer in Adams County, I hear about, I think Pat's heading down the right path with talking to GMA, because I'm hearing about other municipal authorities that are having issues with PFOS and other stuff, and the cost of taking care of that on a backend with these carbon filters and are not sure even what to do with these things is really significant. So it is something that we're hearing more about in, in the municipal sewer and water world, for what it's worth.
I'm trying. But if you have any other suggestions, like I'm gonna do something, and if we have to start small and then kind of build on it, or I'll talk to whoever I can to see if we can do some type of joint venture, but it's just that initial cost, like who's gonna pay what, how are we gonna fund it unless we check a driver's license and, you know, bill and do the weights in the towns, because then you also have the grant funds from DEP, so then who gets that based on the amount of poundage collected? So it, it gets very tricky when you have multiple areas involved, so we just have to think about that. So, think about it and let me know if you have any other suggestions. But I'm gonna keep moving forward and, and seeing what we can do to make something happen, because at least folks might want to be more involved and maybe have some other ideas, I don't know. But it's a big undertaking, I just, I just want to get it started, because I know we've been talking about it for years.
Yeah.
I don't want to talk about it anymore, I want to do it.
Anything else for Deborah? Moving on, current business financial updates. Do you have that?
I have what Charles submitted, and I was only told he wasn't coming forty-five minutes ago as well, so I only have the information he provided in your folder. So I don't know if you want me to go look at each one, I don't have any information on them.
He sent us a text, and the only thing he wanted us to read off was the amount of money that's in the pligot, which is five hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and eleven cents.
So here's your pligot card.
Do that again, Chad.
It's five hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and eleven cents. As of...
July thirty-one, yeah.
It's in the folder, here's, right here too, if you want it. It's July thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, yeah. Five seventy-two, comma, six, twenty-two, eleven. Did you get it? Okay.
And he has the twenty twenty-four audit review...
I can speak to that briefly. So you're required by the Municipality Authorities Act to do a couple of things every year on a financial basis. One of those is having an audit. I can't speak to the mechanics of, of what happened, but I had suggested that that be included on the agenda just so there could be a notation as to the status of that audit. I'm not sure if that's complete. It's typically done by, Ma Reduzel was part of the borough's general audit. That then has to be submitted to DCED up in Harrisburg. They look at that. And then there's also some information that has to be published in the newspaper, so I would just note that that should happen if that hasn't occurred by now.
The documents that Charles supplied said the audit was completed.
Okay.
And the only issue is, is that the DCEP requires a different format than generally accepted accounting practices, so they note that. There's no improprieties with the numbers or anything, but they don't agree that it's a clean way to do it because they want to go through GAAP procedures.
Okay.
Deborah, this thing is...
That's it.
That would be...
Yeah.
Can I see that, please?
Received, Deborah.
Sorry.
Payments received.
Payments received. Okay, so twenty twenty-five, we sent out one thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine invoices. This was for our half-year billing cycle from July first to December thirty-first. To date, we have been paid, and it was around two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that would be due for the half-year billing cycle, and we've received, as of today, one thou, one thousand, one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars towards those payments. So out of the nineteen hundred folks that were billed, there's around nine hundred and ninety that have not paid yet to date. So we're a little more than, around half, but a little more than half of the funds. So that's where we are with that. The new bills will go out January first for the calendar year billing cycle. We are switching our software from Freedom to Freedom G-Works to Edmunds. We're doing a data pool on Tuesday, so our system will be down for credit card payments for five to ten days. So we're moving all that over, and I wanted to get through the initial spurt of payments because we're a little dry during the time before the next due date, which is September thirtieth. So we'll get the new system hopefully up and running. We're gonna do some test payments in it, and then hopefully everything will run smoothly. That's our plan, so...
I would just note for the purposes of the minutes, this indicates Borough of Gettysburg Borough Council audit dated June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. If I recall from years past, Stormwater... If I recall from years past, um, Stormwater Authorities Audit essentially rolls up to the borough. It's considered a, even though it's a separate legal entity, it's considered a constituent entity, I think, in accounting parlance. Um, unmodified opinion on regulatory basis of accounting prepared in accordance with DCED instructions. In our opinion, the borough complied, and I'm assuming that this imputes to the Stormwater Authority. Complied in all material respects with specific, excuse me, specified requirements referenced during the year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
So you're saying that's good enough?
Uh, it's good enough if it's the same format of auditing as it was last year. I can't speak to that, John. But, um, my main concern is making sure that we've recor- complied with what we're required to do under the Act that governs authorities in Pennsylvania, which was submitting it to DCED. Okay. Um, doing a concise financial statement that has to run in the newspaper. And that may have already happened. I can't say I was looking for it specifically.
The Borough's audit was advertised in the newspaper and I don't know that.
I believe it was, because I got a receipt from Sarah today, um, for the cost of advertising the audit, I believe. So I think it was in or going in.
I, I would suggest we just make sure that that happened for the authority as well.
Yep, okay. And I believe she did do both for the borough and the authority, because she did give it to me.
The, the, the big three is completing an audit.
Yes.
Publishing, um, concise financial statement in the newspaper and then submitting certain things to DCED. And I just wanna make sure that we did all of that.
Okay. Sorry.
Is this for you?
Adam.
Twenty twenty-four Annual Report of Municipal Authorities, DCED. Uh, this would be the audit for the authority, um, unmodified opinion. That's what you call reading on the fly, folks. Uh, do, do. Okay. Looks like the audit's done. Looks like it was submitted to DCED. Just wanna make sure it runs the newspaper. What has to be done?
And I'm pretty positive that was done too, but I'll double check tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Um, in regards to liens, I don't have a whole lot to report. Um, as they get paid off, we remove them. Relatively quiet on that lately.
I just got one in yesterday, so I do need to send that to you. And then I did a, a data pool from Freedom of all the liens we've had since twenty nineteen to date. Um, so they can double check what they have transferred over in, in our data pool, so.
And I think, um, just to kind of build off that, that's gonna be the big thing, is making sure that the information that's in Freedom relative to which properties, um, and which property owners, uh, were leaned and the amounts. Which ones are accruing interest, because some are in early days, they were not. Um, that all that is there, so that when people call for a payoff because their property's sold, we know exactly how much to quote them. And we're sure that when people call, um, prior to a settlement, that we aren't saying, oh, no, there's nothing here in the system, when there should be.
Yep. I just sent one out today that was in Freedom, so I did send that to you, uh, the copy of all the liens that we have current. So when the data pool goes over, I'm gonna try to spot check everything I can to make sure the correct data was moved over.
Yeah.
And I'm keeping all the paper copies of everything that was paid with a, a sheet per day when I do our batches to double check all that as well.
Okay, yeah. I think going forward, it'll be easy with the new system. It's just the, the old stuff coming in, that we wanna make sure it's getting in right.
And Freedom changed the account numbers. The account number's supposed to be the same for all years and they changed it, because I'm not sure why. So we had a, a lot of issues trying to focus everything and I think the new company, um, transferred everything to one account number. So when we do the data merge, we're gonna keep it all under one. So that way, when you go in, you have an account number and then your invoice for that year.
Okay.
So the account number's good for the whole, whole system, so.
Gotcha.
We're, we're hopefully.
That's all I have.
Fingers are crossed to, to make this smooth transition.
Old business, construction project updates. Uh, Mr. Harbaugh.
So the North Washington Street project is substantially complete. Um, Chad, if you wanna chime in with some of the specifics to the three contracts. Um, but obviously, the stormwater's been done for a long time. Um, the curbing, the, the CDBG contract has been completed substantially. A couple punchless items to do. Uh, same way with the DCNR contract. Um, the paving is completed. Um, the lines are, the markings for the roadway are out there. Just punchless items to do. Um, do you wanna chime in on the?
Yeah, I think. Pretty much Robbie wrapped it up in a nutshell. The only thing that the average person might notice isn't done yet is the trees. The trees aren't installed yet and that's because you don't install trees in the middle of the summer. It's just, they don't, it's not the proper planting season. So, um, that's probably gonna happen within the next month here. Um, usually like end of August, beginning of September, most arborists say that that's okay. There, there's a warranty that comes with the trees and we don't get the warranty if you plant outside of their growing season. So, um, that's kind of the only other thing I would really say it's specific to the Stormwater Authority. I, I will say, um, I don't wanna get too far ahead of myself with this. Um, but there is a potential issue with our storm pipe as it relates to a med ed pool. Uh, we have, feel like there's damage to a storm pipe that we're gonna be looking into. I don't know a whole lot yet. We, we gotta do some televising, but I just wanted to let you know that. So, as, as Robbie said, we're substantially complete. Project's basically done. But there's always these little things that pop up, right, whenever you're towards the end of the project. So we're gonna be looking into it a little bit more, um, seeing what the, what the issue is, what the resolve is. We gotta televise the pipes. Getting through Municipal Authority's gonna be helping us with some of the televising of some of these things to see if we can figure out what this issue is and then, well, address it from there. And I'm not, I, I'd be, it'd be premature for me to, to say anything more than, than that until we really know what the issue is. But I just wanted to let you know, because if you're hearing that, that we're all done and then two months from now, I say, wow, just kidding. Now at least you, you're aware that there is a potential issue.
See, I, I just have one more thing to add. Um, so if you drive down there, you're gonna notice that the blacktop is not completed all the way to the bridge. Um, that is an overlap for GMA's project that they have to replace that manhole on the north side or the south side of the bridge. That is right now their bypass for their new interceptor line. Once they can flow into their new interceptor line, which should be towards the end of the month here. Um, and they will come back and, and get rid of that bypass line and redo that manhole. Then they're required to finish paving the rest of the street from the manhole down to the bridge.
What, what's going on in Water Street? Is that?
That's GMA, that's GMA's project as well. That, well, so they're, they're doing two different things. They did the interceptor. They did the services. Well, I shouldn't say they did the services, but they ran the interceptor line. Now they're running a water line and connecting new services on those two blocks of Water Street.
And, and if I could add one thing to, to the discussion with the GMA interceptor project. Um, because this is something that we might have to, between Robbie and I, we might be having to make a decision kind of here on behalf of the Stormwater Authority over the next couple of months. Um, so they're currently up to the Franklin cul-de-sac. They're making that boring under the railroad tracks. And I don't know if you'll remember the conversation, but whenever they, um, GMA submitted to the borough for the street, um, highway occupancy permits to dig in their, in the borough's roads, we reviewed that. And I noted at the time that there was a bunch of storm pipes that were in, in, in the way of this new potential interceptor. And the decision was made at the time, kind of to kick the can to the time of construction. Because you don't know exactly what you're gonna be getting into until you start digging these things up. And that we acknowledged that some of these things were corrugated metal pipe. In fact, it gets super complicated. I don't wanna get too far into weeds, but there's places where it comes out of an inlet plastic and then it goes into the next inlet corrugated metal. So somewhere in the middle, it changed pipe types. And there's places where we're finding out that they don't run just directly from one inlet to the next. It's, it's a blind bend somewhere. So we're, we're, we're having some issues out there at Franklin Street. That, that, that's to say the least, right? So, so the, the decision that we made, the Stormwater Authority made a year ago when we were talking about this, was that the Stormwater Authority would pay for the new pipe and GMA would pay for the construction installation of that pipe. So we buy this plastic, rather than them trying to band together old corrugated metal pipe that's failing, we would buy the new plastic pipe. They would install it as part of their project. Um, the, the, the question's gonna be, that I think that GMA's starting to, 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 to have a little bit of trouble with is the solution isn't quite that simple. Sometimes there's these pieces of pipe where we're trying to band back to an existing pipe that's just not a good spot. And they gotta run it all the way back to the next inlet, which might be another hundred feet. Now GMA's saying, hey, that's a little bit outside of our scope of services here that we agreed to. So to me, it's in the Stormwater Authority's best interest still to get the pipe replaced properly the whole way with, with GMA's contractor that's on site. They're already mobilized. We just need to pay them to, to go for a little bit further. So we're gonna have, have more of those conversations. Unfortunately, I don't have a whole lot of details tonight to give to you. I just know that they're running into some of those, some of those issues right now. We met with them last week and started to try to identify some of these things. But, um, of course, they have permitting responsibilities as well that they've gotta, uh, uh, abide to, so.
Right. And, and the, the, the pipe out of Franklin Street, the, one of the solutions is to run it down to Stevens Run and ban in that blind box, because there's also a collapsed pipe underneath a huge mature tree. But if Mark does that, that's not in their, in their realm for their DEP permit. So we'd have to look about getting a permit to do that.
As far as the contractor's price, he has a price for extensions throughout the, in other words, we know what he charges us to run a hundred feet.
Yeah, they, they did price some things in their bid.
Yeah.
Anticipating some of this.
Right.
So we do have some prices. I, I, I'm not sure if we have a price on every type of pipe. Or, and, and in this case, like, like Robbie said, there might be an end wall that we have to purchase. And I don't know that they, that they purchased, that they priced any end walls, but I kinda know what an end wall is, a couple thousand bucks. You know what I mean? So what we'll know if, if, if their, if their price is in line with other prices that we would get. I don't think they're looking to, you know, they're not, we're looking to get the proper solution. That's the goal here. We don't want to put together a Band-Aid. It's just gonna be an issue. They're gonna pave all the road, the whole thing at this, you know, the whole cul-de-sac. Now's the time to get all the pipes properly done, so.
Yeah, and that's more than one pipe.
It is. It's, there's two different, two separate systems coming out at two different locations, one of which has failed under the tree.
Well, it went from, it went from corrugated metal to clay to concrete. And the clay is in the middle underneath the tree roots. It's collapsing.
But, well, that's, that's been a bad area for a long time, because, uh, the storm sewer box at Franklin and Chambersburg Street, if we get like a twenty or thirty minute downpour, instead of water going into the box, water comes out of the box. And that's been that way for a long time, because it can't get through to get out into Stevens Run. And we never televised that line or anything. Uh, I think we may have tried that one time, but I don't think we could get through it. And we just assumed it was collapsed. Uh, there might even be some old, uh, terracotta field tile laid in there back to back. Would not surprise me if you might want some of that. But you, you need something from us.
Uh, um, I don't know that we need anything specific, but I think we're, I'm kind of getting what, what I was after was kind of a head nod that me and Robbie are heading down the right path of getting this done properly than, rather than trying to Band-Aid and save a lot of money.
Well, well, as far as I'm concerned, you are, I mean, when it's opened up, now's time to fix it.
Right. Agreed.
I agree with that, but, but I don't remember. Did we put financial limits on how much we're gonna put in? Because if that's in there, we'll have to adjust that.
I don't know that we did. I remember what he's saying. We agreed that we would supply the pipe and they would supply the labor, but I don't know that we put a.
Yeah, I don't remember putting any specific numbers to it.
I don't think we did, because I don't think we had an idea. And I remember talking about this before, because that's not a good area to dig in. This is gonna be one of those things that probably should've been fixed fifty years ago.
I, I, I'm not making that. I'm just talking about governments and.
Yeah.
Fiscal controls, that's all.
Well, that's our guy.
I, I think you only gave numbers to, on their project for Bream, Bream Alley wall.
Yeah, I think so too.
For the, the pipe.
I think this was one of those that we just, yeah, okay, we'll go along with it and do it.
Yeah, Bream, Bream was a specific number, because there's that two-thirds, one-third thing. But I don't know that we ever put any. I guess, you know, the other thing that I wanna be clear about is if, so, so what we agreed on was, we, is that the Stormwater Authority would purchase the material. GMA's contractor would pay for the labor and installation of the material. If GMA starts to say, well, now, like, if we wanted to get this thing done right and it means going to the next inlet, now GMA says, well, now, that's outside of the scope of our project or what we agreed to. There's gonna be some additional costs in addition to just materials. Do you guys have any issues with that?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, example, that's gonna be everyone, Springs Avenue by Bream Alley. To tie on the pipe, they're gonna have to chase it all the way up to West Street.
I was just looking for some type of best of out, but.
Yeah, I mean.
Authorities Committee here.
I, I think if, if we have to, you know, worst-case scenario is we have to call a special meeting if the numbers come out between the, between our meetings, since we're only meeting every other month, because we certainly don't wanna hold anything up.
I don't have that idea.
But I, at the same time, my recollection is that we talked about pipe. Uh, but now you went a little bit deeper in that tonight. I mean, if we're talking some head walls and I can see where it makes. Hundred percent common sense to go back to a, an inlet. My question, knowing what I know in this town, is when you get back to that inlet, are we gonna replace the inlet? Because it could be an old inlet that's cinder block and half rotten.
Where do you stop, right?
Yeah, I mean, um, I expect the worst, because I've done enough digging in this town to know that. And so, I mean.
So, so there was, there was some, there was some questions figuring out a way at Franklin Street, we may have to purchase a box and eliminate a box.
Yeah, that wouldn't surprise me.
Yeah.
But I, I think Pat's right, though. I mean, I mean, um, when we were talking about pipe, that wasn't a big chunk of money. And nobody was thinking about how far you'd have to go. We were talking about, well, they're gonna dig through here, they're gonna find old pipe, so we're gonna replace that pipe, because nobody wanted to try to patch a, a galvanized pipe. We just put in new pipe. But we could be in a real can of worms there and we could be spending a chunk of money.
Right.
That we weren't figuring on. So I, I think we need to watch the cost there and worst-case scenario is we need to call a special meeting.
Yeah. I, I think you need a little bit more information before you.
Yeah.
I, I won't use the phrase give a blank check, but you don't, you don't know what you're authorizing at this.
And you're right. You're just gonna have to do it incident per incident instead of the whole job. I mean, that's all you're gonna be able to do.
Yeah, and we, we had that exact conversation. Like, whenever I did the review, I was talking to, um, GMA's engineer, Bukart Horn. And I was kind of asking for a little bit more at that time. And I was saying, we, we need to know some more detail, so I can go to the Stormwater Authority and let them know what. And, and then they were kind of pushing back, saying, well, we don't really know, right? There's still gonna be a lot of unforeseen's and it's gonna be better for us to figure this out as we go. So it was kind of that chicken and egg thing that always, that metaphor I always use. And, and that, and now here we are. We're, we're, they're under construction. They're starting to dig up these pipes and we're starting to figure out where they go by digging them up. That's kind of the only way to, to really know, so. It's hard to, it's really hard to say exactly what we're talking about in terms of dollar amounts. But I like the idea, if it gets to the point where it's beyond what we had originally discussed with some pipe, then we need to have a special meeting to further authorize any additional expenditures.
If I, I don't recall exactly, but if, but if I, uh. What I think should've happened is we have a budget for all our projects, right? This is one of them, so we have a budget.
Yep.
And in that budget, we have always put contingency, because we always have needs for that. So, uh, I guess I'd like to see what we originally budgeted, where we are now. So we get an idea of what we're talking about here. Are we adjusting the original budget? It sounds like maybe we are. It sounds like maybe we are. Are we saying there's more contingency? Because we're running into, back when I was in construction, it was like, we ran into rock. Okay, we ran into rocks, and now we need more money. But, it's just a matter of defining where we are now, what we know, and where we're headed, projection of what we don't know.
And we don't know as much as we should know.
I don't know. Sometimes just to know is costly, John.
So, I expect all of this to be done in the next couple of months here. Question was how, what time of the year? Is weather gonna start impacting this? I think this is gonna get done soon. Now, they're even talking about, you know, the other update here for construction projects is the Bream Alley wall. I got, I reached out to Mark last week, and he said sometime this fall. So, they are still planning on getting it done. They were originally looking at it this summer, but they had some delays in the material procurement. So, they're not, they're not even really up to that, to Bream Alley anyways at this point. But sometime this fall, they, they do intend to get that Bream Alley wall. And that's kinda getting towards the end of the project. So, they're gonna be past Franklin Street here within the next month or two. Probably before, I'm sorry, probably before your next Stormwater Authority meeting, which is why we're kinda bringing it up now and suggesting that we might need to have another special meeting.
Anything else on those projects? Stevens Run cleanup.
So, we don't have a whole lot of update tonight. We'll probably wait till Mike gets back next, next meeting. It's something that he's been asking Robbie and I to keep on track with. The big-ticket item there is with the permitting and the design that we're doing with the next two wall sections. Whenever we do the permitting for that, we're also gonna be considering whether or not we wanna do more permitting for more stream cleaning. That's the big-ticket item, is how do we do this stream cleaning and get it permitted? 'Cause there are permitting requirements. So, I don't have a whole lot to add to that tonight. I don't know if you have anything more, Robbie, to add to that?
No. Other than your one budget line item for the, our Walk Behind Skid Order, it has arrived. It is not delivered yet, but it has arrived at the, at Bobcat down in Hanover. So, we will have that hopefully the end of this week, beginning of next, and in service and ready to go.
The Beale Sturmer?
No, it's actually Crownstone over on Third Street. It's Bobcat of Adams County.
And I do, I do anticipate that by your next meeting in two months from now, I'll have a little bit more of an update on, on the Stevens Run wall, the discussion that we were having. Just today, I met with the solicitor, a borough solicitor, to have some conversations about reaching out to those property owners. So, that, those contacts are gonna happen imminently, like, within the next week or two. We're gonna have to survey it. We've already done some deed research, pulled deeds, did some property lines. I have mapping on some of the stuff already. So, we're gonna be talking to those property owners within the next, within the next month here. So, by, by your meeting next, in two months from now, I expect to have an agenda item to give you a little bit more of an update on that front. And at that time, we can have more of a discussion on the permitting for the, the stream cleaning. Right now, there's, and just so you know, with this conversation, there's no, like, imminent issues with the stream being clogged or being blocked. Like, we don't know of any tree user. The, the big-ticket item was at the, at the Knoll Bridge, where it was pretty grown up. That's all been cleaned out. Everything's pretty clean at this point. But doesn't mean that we don't wanna stay ahead of it and keep these permitting discussions going. It's just, there's nothing, you know, there's no, like, emergency right now that we, that we're aware of.
Well, the biggest problem with Stevens Run is the sewer lines across it.
Sure. And they hang stuff up.
I don't change that, so. New business, BMP outreach composting bins.
Yes, that's our new program we're gonna work on doing. We did rain barrels. And Kurt came to our rain barrel, didn't he?
Ours is working.
It's up and functioning. So, yeah, and that was a very popular thing. Composting does fall under our MS four as a BMP best management practice. Its purpose would be to satisfy our MCMs, which is our public outreach and education. So, we wanna get community involvement. People pay these fees. They don't really understand stormwater MS four, so we like to do these workshops to kinda engage the public and, and get them involved to be a part of the solution and reduce their carbon footprints. Grass clippings stockpiled near waterways can cause algae blooms, algae blooms and fish kills. And that the average household sends around six hundred and fifty pounds of that type of material, compostable material to the landfill every year. So, I was looking into a grant, which we did get denied, to pay for these. I did put an article in the quarterly newsletter that we were looking to do a public outreach kinda educational thing for MS four for composting bins. And I had around twenty-two folks that wanted to do the workshop. That would cost somewhere in the neighborhood of seventeen fifty, one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. There are a couple of different types of composting bins. These are outdoor composting bins. These run around seventy dollars apiece. We also have smaller kitchen ones that can sit on your kitchen counter that are around thirty dollars. So, the max I would need, if you guys would approve that fee, I could check with the folks that are signed up and see if they'd prefer a kitchen counter one, which is half the cost, or one of the outdoor ones, and then just kinda buy what's needed for that class. And then maybe try again next year for the grant. So, I didn't know if that was something you guys would be willing to approve, that, that cost to, to do that workshop. It would be around two to three hours. Our other option is to use some of the rain barrels that I got, and we could actually drill holes in it and try to make one. But that might be a little more labor intensive for... And then, how do you turn it? You need to turn it and do things. So, these are kinda set up where they're already functional. And they're around, like I said, average of seventy dollars. But if some folks want something smaller for inside, that would be half the cost. And then I wouldn't need as, as much of the funding. But, I calculated it to be around seventeen fifty.
Have we budgeted for that?
Well, there is public outreach and education in our thing. I'll have to double-check to see what's there, but we do budget money in there. And I have not spent any of it yet this year. And I think we have around twenty-seven hundred or three thousand dollars in there. I can see if I can find it.
Did you envision charging the workshop participants anything?
On that one, I was not going to. We do want some. But, I could, but at, at this point, I was looking at getting the grant approved. Was my plan, my grandmaster plan, but that got denied. So, it was looking to be a free one. I don't know if, I don't know if he has our... I'll have to look. But I know we have around twenty-five hundred or three thousand dollars in a fund for our public outreach and education program. So, if it's within the amount that we have in the budget, would that be approvable, or do we need to have specific numbers? I just wouldn't exceed what's in there for our, our educational program.
What is your timeframe to run this?
I was hoping to do it in, like, next month.
Next month.
So, people can, you know, get it, oh.
The program services?
No, it would be, hang on, let me see if I can find that. Somewhere, that's under expenses.
That's on my...
Yeah. Because we do have it in our budget. I just have to find it. I, I should've checked that before I came. I do apologize.
If you're comfortable with it, you can authorize her to spend up to her budget line, if you think it's an appropriate use of the money.
I mean, the money's there for that purpose, and we did use it for rain barrels and educational classes last year. So, yeah, if I didn't exceed the amount in there for public outreach and education, there's a specific line item for that each year to have these programs to satisfy our MS four requirements. Thank you.
Motion's in the board.
I think we should do it.
Yeah. I'm not sure. We need, we need to get approvals if you don't.
It's a budgeted expense.
Oh.
Need a motion for that?
Yeah, it says public outreach and education.
You don't need any, no, not if you're not...
Okay, I just wasn't sure, and I wanted to make sure...
You're not spending any money you haven't already authorized.
Yeah.
This is more of a report.
Yeah, I think we have consensus to move ahead on it, and it's a budgeted item, so go for it.
And it says here, we have ten thousand dollars, and I don't know what's, it looks like it's nine hundred and, nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars left.
And it is an acknowledged MS four.
MCM, and it is a best management practice. I did send you guys, or pass out the little composting guides and how it actually damages our municipal water supply. Because again, they have to spend extra treatment things for some of the, the things that are in there to, you know, take care of the, the water. Let's see, grass clippings, yeah, so. And Robbie has a drop-off there as well for clippings and brush and things like that. But I thought, it's just a nice thing to get the community involved and hopefully do, do something.
Sounds like everybody here is in favor, so.
But that's like a consensus that we're...
Yeah. Discussion, no action taken.
Okay.
True. No action needed or taken.
And that's all I have for that.
Anybody have anything else before we go to public input?
Sir.
I, I have one thing. I have a question, primarily, I guess, be for Chad. When people put in-ground pools in, in the burrow, I assume there's permits required, even though they're never posted. How do we know that, I mean, when you put an in-ground pool, that obviously changes your drainage area and the runoff. How does that change their fee if we don't see any permits, but they magically appear? Because there's two pools in my neighborhood that went in in the last year, and I never saw any permits posted anywhere. And I've asked the question here if permits were drawn, and nobody seems to wanna give me an answer, which makes me think that no permits were drawn.
So, it's a, it's a great question, because this comes up a lot in municipal government. So, I'll start by saying, these permits are usually go through code enforcement. And they're often determined about how deep, or how, how deep the water is. So, if it's more than two feet, that's when PA code kicks in. So, under two feet, kiddie pool, those kinda things don't get permitted. So, it's two, yeah, those are temporary things. It's two feet is the requirement for where it's a safety thing. It's like a stormwater facility basis. Once it's two feet, it's supposed to be fenced, right? So, that's kind of part of the, part of the thing with the fencing, to keep them safe from, from your neighbor's kids, whatever. There's a, there's a different, there's a lot of schools of thought. And I've heard of different arguments from different engineers over the days about what this does to stormwater runoff. If the pools are maintained properly, they usually have a freeboard in the top of them of, say, ten inches. The biggest storm event, like the hundred-year storm event, is about seven to eight inches. So, there's an argument, there's a school of thought out there that engineers say is that swimming pool actually has more freeboard than... There's actually less runoff whenever you have a swimming pool than what it was before. There's another school of thought saying, well, what if this person doesn't maintain it? And they let it get full, and back-to-back storm events, whenever this thing's full, then it's just running off. Then, in that case, there is more runoff. So, I don't know that there's a, there is a one-size-fits-all answer to this.
Well, how do they get the freeboard back? They have to drain the pool.
How to get the freeboard back, yeah.
Should fall under, in my opinion.
The safer way to do it is just to require it to be permitted, and then you know you're covered, right? But that is, there are different schools of thought about, about that conversation.
Well, the other thing is all the paving that went in around these...
And they do have to submit a stormwater plan.
Always the paving around it is new impervious area. That's never been a discussion point.
There were two pools permitted this year.
Both on Springs Avenue?
The last one was a white fence with the little black pickets.
And the other one's on the corner of...
Up at the other end of the block.
Yeah, I tried to get a house number, but they don't have a house number posted, so.
But yes, they do.
Another code violation that we don't wanna force.
We, and the land conservancy, we preserve properties. We can, and we, we track an impervious surface. And it's gonna be defined multiple ways. But the way we define it is if there's a pool there, a pond, pool, whatever, it's impervious. Doesn't matter how full it is. So, that's one, I mean, I'm sure there are interpretations. That's how we interpret it.
That, that's, that's the, the more fail-safe, right? That, if you just do that, then you know it's covered.
Well, if you don't do that, if you don't assume the worst, then, then you have to go ahead and make sure that it's not the worst case.
Right.
Is that something we need to add to our regulations?
Potentially, we, I don't know that we, we say one way or the other in, in our definition of impervious surface, whether or not we say if pools are included or not.
Well, the, it doesn't specifically say pools, but it does have if water cannot penetrate through that facility, which it can't in a pool. The only way to get your freeboard back is to drain it, which causes a problem, because then you have the chlorine going out. But if you put it over a vegetated surface, then it has time to filter and clean. But, most people don't have a large area to do that in the burrow. They're very small lots.
So, we, we don't know sitting here what the regulations are. Can we review that for...
Yeah, I don't think, it would certainly wouldn't hurt if we wanna just be clear and just go ahead and add that, and then we know. I'm pretty sure it doesn't say pools right now.
It does.
It just says, like, like Deborah said, if it, if it precludes infiltration into the ground, so you could suggest that a swimming pool precludes infiltration into the ground.
That's why it's impervious for the land conservancy.
Right.
Because the land conservancy's viewing it as it's, it's preventing rain falling on that area from getting and recharging the groundwater. That's not necessarily the stormwater's direct concern. You're more concerned about it running off into streams, so.
Certification would be helpful.
Impervious, under the land conservancy. Yeah. Yeah. But there again, they're looking at it as well. It's great that there's water, but water falling in that pond by design, you know, for a clay-lined pond or whatever, it's not, it's not recharging the groundwater.
I just go by the definition of impervious in there, because there's not something specific.
Should we think about adding that to make it clear?
Absolutely. I think so. Yeah, otherwise you get into discussions like Deborah was having, there was a runoff, you don't wanna get into that.
Can I make things easier?
An emotion or is that...
I, I don't know that you need a motion for that. I think you're, you can make, somebody can make proposed language. You can come back and consider it a future meeting, or discuss it further.
Is that Chad's view?
And, and that goes, I like what, the way that Adam just worded it, so that's something that we can look into. And then, in the future, then, we'd be a formal motion to officially amend our rates, rules and regulations, or wherever that's defined. But there, there's two places where we would need to look to, keep in mind. We had all those conversations about impervious surface versus lot coverage, which kinda have two different meanings and two different intents. Lot coverage is more about the aesthetics of your property versus impervious cert, 'cause you can have all of these new technologies that are, asphalt pavement can be permeable now. They have permeable pavement, permeable concrete, permeable pavers, right? And all this stuff, so that you can cover your entire property with a permeable surface. And if you had to work, the definition of lot coverage would allow permeable surface, then, then people could just cover their entire, their entire property with asphalt. And that's not what we want aesthetic-wise. So, there's two different things we gotta look at. We gotta look at lot coverage and impervious surface with our swimming pools.
Again, going back to my experience mostly with the land conservancy on defining these things, is those permeable surfaces need to be maintained. And so, we don't think it's worth a gamble to have a count on somebody maintaining it. So, we do not count it in our permeable surface.
We do require O and M agreements recorded to maintain those facilities, and we can do code enforcement if they do not, which we've had some folks repave the top of the permeable and put tar coatings on the top, which defeats the purpose of the permeable asphalt. So, yeah, a lot of people don't understand maintenance.
So, what's the action? We're gonna review that wording in the...
I think Chad's gonna do some research on it and...
Direct the, direct the engineer to, to look into the topic and come back to you guys with some more. I'll, I'll get with Deborah, and we'll get, give you guys some information two months from now.
Public comment, last round. Mr. Moon? Hearing no public comment. Motion to adjourn?
I'll move. We adjourn.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
I'd like to call to order this business meeting for the council of the Borough of Gettysburg for Monday, August 11th, 2025. If you would all please stand, join me for a moment of silence and a pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the
Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God,
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, folks. I have sort of extensive announcements to make here, so hopefully my voice will stick with me through the whole thing. Upcoming meetings, dates of note that the public should be aware of. All of these will be 7:00 PM, except for this first one, which is at 6:30 PM. Monday, August 25th, at 6:30 PM, we will have the second of two hearings on this year's CDBG public funds allocations. Monday, August 25th, will be a council work session. Monday, August 20, I'm sorry, Monday, September 8th, is a regular council business meeting. Monday, September 22nd, will be a council work session. And here's where it gets interesting for us. Monday, October 13th, will be the business meeting with the presentation of the 2026 budget proposal. Monday, October 20th, will be the, a budget work session. Monday, October 27th, will be a council work session, where we will be talking heavily about the budget. Monday, November 3rd, will be a budget work session. Tuesday, November 4th, will be a budget work session if needed. Monday, November 10th, we will vote to advertise the 2026 draft budget. Wednesday, November 19th, the draft budget will be posted for public review. Monday, November 24th, council work session. Probably won't be talking about the budget at that point. Monday, December 8th, we would theoretically vote to adopt the 2026 budget. An executive session was conducted by the Borough Council of the Borough of Gettysburg immediately following the adjournment of its monthly work session public meeting held on July 28th, 2025, consistent with Section 708A1 and Section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act. An executive session will be conducted by the Borough Council immediately following the adjournment of this evening's monthly general business public meeting, consistent with Section 708A1 and Section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act for the following purposes. One, to provide updated information and to discuss matters involving the employment and appointment of current or prospective borough employees, the terms and conditions of employment, and the evaluation of performance of current borough employees. And two, to review and discuss matters of borough business, which if conducted in public could lead to the disclosure of information or confidentiality protected by law. We will move on to the approval of minutes. I would take a motion to approve the August 11th, 2025 agenda as presented.
That's moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about the agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we have an agenda. I would take a motion to approve the minutes of the council meeting held July 14, 2025, and to approve the minutes of the CDBG public hearing number one, and the council work session each held on July 28th, 2025, as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Were there any omissions, errors, or additions to be made? All right, all those in favor of approval, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. We don't have a special presentation tonight, so that's going to take us to our first public comment section of the evening. This first section is restricted to items appearing on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to speak on a topic that does not appear on tonight's agenda, we will ask you to stay and wait for the second public comment section at the end of tonight's meeting. We need you to use the podium. Please use the microphone, state your name and address of residence, and limit your comments to five minutes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Catherine Yarshuk, and I live at 47 Locust Avenue. Thank you so much to this council for the work you do. I'm not kidding. I just really kind of discovered what you all do, and I have tremendous appreciation. So I've returned to just share a bit about the why I'm feeling like residential parking would be helpful. Where I live, at the bottom of Hillcrest, we have limited spots. We do, I do not in my building. I rent, and I've lived there for eight years, love it. And it's more recently that I've just seen an increase of cars parking on Hillcrest Avenue. It's notable. And so I don't have an option outside. It, I can often, except for Friday night football, if you have kids at, at Gettysburg, Friday night football at Warrior Stadium, that street is completely locked up. Like, if I step out and the game is on, I cannot find a spot. I have to park, like, by the hospital, so, because it gets really locked up. So that is challenging. I do have neighbors with disabilities. I have neighbors with cancer, and you wouldn't know it looking at me. I'm young. I have a 23-year-old to look at her, we're healthy. But I, it just felt really important for me to share, just like, we don't expect things to happen like cancer to a 23-year-old, but that happened. And so we were gone for full days to Baltimore, to York for appointments, coming back tired. She would have had, like, invasive exploration of her cancer. So even just parking, even though my road, my street, might not have been totally full, the bottom of the street is consistently full. To park a street block away from my house, to be able to get my daughter, you know, this was a year and a half journey, just to say the humanity of, of living without my own driveway. And it would just be really helpful to have maybe even the one side of the street where the two buildings at the very bottom, I'm on the corner of Locust and Hillcrest, that those eight slots for residential parking could be really helpful for my neighbors who have their own medical issues. So I really thank you for all your deliberation and your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment.
Hello again. I'm Katie Daughter. I live on 526 Hillcrest Place, right above Catherine, actually. And you might remember me, I was here back in May. I apologize for the work. I came right here after a workout, so. While I do love to walk in Gettysburg, it can be very much of an inconvenience, but more so when I was finding out my neighbors who are elderly or, and/or disabled, we really need some sort of solution. I'm all for a compromise, but it is heartbreaking to especially watch my neighbors have to walk a very far distance to where they live. We live here. And I love tourists, actually. People think I'm crazy, but I love the fact that people come here to learn history and to explore this great town. I've been here four years, and I absolutely love it. And I just want it to be a great place for tourists and residents. The, the biggest thing, again, as Catherine spoke to, the street, it's, I actually took pictures last night. I was out all day, and I came back around nine o'clock last night. And there was a lot of parking clear up top of the street. But the, where we live, there was almost none. And the, there was two spots open, and I couldn't even park in the one, because some people don't know how to park yet. So, again, I'm, I'm healthy, I'm fit, I, I don't mind walking, you know, sometimes, but in the winter, when I'm hauling groceries, it's, it's just a, it's a, it's a, I feel like it's a right, right, as a resident. And I think it's also very conceiving, or discon, excuse me, deceiving to some people, especially in the building I live in. I explained when I was here in May, there are four units in the house that I'm in. There is a driveway, but that driveway is for the one tenant that lives around that house. I do not have access to that, nor do the other two people in my building. So I have been accused of, well, you have a driveway, and it's like, no, I actually don't. If you'd like to see my lease, I can prove that to you. And I understand that some people on our street don't have a problem. And those people have driveways. Some of us don't have driveways. Some of us only have street parking. So, again, if it is, I don't know what compromise we can come to, but it may be resident parking, like Catherine said, for half the street, for, and I'm talking, it can just be one side, it can be both sides, but something really needs to happen here, because although I don't plan on staying in an apartment my entire life, I would like to buy a house in this town, it's going to be a problem for the next tenant. So, that is all. Thank you for having me again.
Thank you. Public comment.
My name is Steve Marsh. I live at 565 Hillcrest Place. And I respectfully request a no vote on the proposed residential parking permit at Hillcrest. The original intent of RPPAR in Gettysburg was to stop commuters and students from parking all day, blocking residents. That is not the case here. Go stores, visitors, Mr. G, and the restaurant patrons could still park for two hours under RPP, so the proposal will not reduce these uses. The real parking demand comes from the increased residential density in a few properties. As stated at the workshop, one reportedly former two-unit home was converted into four units, with four cars in the top alone. The neighboring house reportedly has four or five units with up to three cars each. Together, that potentially is 19 cars for just two houses. This is not a tourism-driven problem. Evidence shows there is no chronic shortage. On July 30th, Gettysburg Times' front page photo, an overhead view, and an overhead view shown on the July 20th work session, and the pictures or video I shared with the council of Bike Week Weekend, all reveal plenty of available spaces at lower Hillcrest. The proposed hybrid RPP is neither a benefit to the residents nor their best interest. It still allows two-hour parking for non-residents, adds enforcement costs for police and parking authority, and would unfairly burden tenants with fees to park where they've always had to have it for free, without solving the issue. Even during busy times, residents may have to park a little further up the hill, but is not eliminated. That does not justify an ongoing costly permit system and a financial burden with no resolution to the parking concerns. For these reasons, I ask for a vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment.
Good evening. My name is Brandon Stone. I am the Chair of the Gettysburg Historic Architectural Review Board. I come before you tonight out of concern of how our historic district ordinance is currently being interpreted, and how it will be interpreted for the foreseeable future, unless you act. Specifically, embedded in tonight's agenda is an administrative approval to relocate an entire historic structure as a minor project within, without any public review or discussion. See COA 250031, 95 Steinware Avenue. Under Chapter 11, Section 104 of the Historic District Ordinance, it explicitly requires HARB review for various project treatments, including alteration, construction, and demolition. Relocating a building, which necessarily involves demolishing and rebuilding its foundation, clearly falls within the intent and wording of this requirement. However, in this instance, the borough has circumvented the review process by classifying the relocation as a minor project, manipulating the rules to favor a single business owner while compromising the integrity of our historic district. This ordinance also specifies project categories to assist in the streamlining of HARB's approval process, which is intended to reduce the regulatory burden. For example, a minor project is one that does not change the appearance of a building, such as replacing deteriorated wood with identical wood. Minor projects may be approved without referring to the board. Chapter 11, 108, Section 1A. However, relocating an entire historic structure, demolishing its foundation, and constructing a new one in a different location is far from that definition. In fact, COA 250031, 95 Steinware Avenue meets the ordinance definition of a critical project. A critical project is defined as a demolition of all or part of a building, a change in its configuration or rhythm, and an alteration to a sensitive building, which is any structure over 50 years old or of architectural significance. This request actually satisfies all three criteria under our existing ordinance. Critical projects require full HARB review, not administrative sign-off done behind closed doors. This is not a technicality. It is a matter of preserving the integrity of the public process. Moreover, this is more than a procedural matter. It sets a precedent. If relocation can be deemed a minor project, then any property owner in the historic district could move a building without public review or design oversight. That erodes the protection our ordinance was created to provide, and weakens the public trust in our preservation system. Preservation decisions should not hinge on administrative convenience or selective interpretation. They should follow the same transparent public process that applies to all borough property owners, regardless of the size of the property or the influence of the applicant. Even my fellow HARB members recognize this problem. In the July meeting, the record that states Vice Chair Schaefer made a motion as a consensus of the board present members to accept all administrative approvals since June 18th, 2025 HARB meeting, with the exception of COA 250031, because HARB did not approve the relocation without board review. I asked, I am asking council to take a corrective action. Reverse the administrative approval for COA 25031, or, at a minimum, remand either COA 250056 or COA 250062 back to HARB for review. Affirm that relocation of historic structures within the historic district are considered a critical project under our existing ordinance, and resist calls from borough staff to rewrite the ordinance to remedy a situation they created themselves. Our ordinance is clear. The definition of critical project is clear, and the importance of preserving both the physical integrity and the decision-making process of our historic district shall be equally clear. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Mr. Stone, could I have your written notes there? Would that be possible? May I have your written statement there? Would that be possible? Something tells me we'll be revisiting your comments tonight. Any further public comment? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on. We're going to start with current and old business tonight in the Planning Department with Mr. Whitmore.
Good evening. A copy of the report was provided electronically. We do have discussion points regarding, I guess, COAs in that report. We could talk about that later on in the agenda. We do have tonight, though, a motion requesting We do have tonight, though, a motion requesting completion of the Quality of Life Ordinance. Um, as we previously discussed, this is the code enforcement ticketing. Pete is here, our code enforcement officer. He can provide some, a general additional information, but um, I think we're just looking at tonight's approval to proceed. Uh, these should be going live in the near future. We're going to have an advertising campaign to at least identify, uh, identify, but help individuals be aware that we're going to be ticketing for certain offenses, especially as they relate to things like overgrown weeds, tall grass, but then also in the winter months, shoveling snow.
All right. So we do have a lot to discuss here in the, in your department tonight. Some of it is somewhat structural, some of it is sort of housekeeping. Um, we've had a sort of, um, evolving approach to, um, how we look at HARB's work output here, and I think we're going to have to get into that a little bit here tonight. Uh, but let's start with, uh, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Whitmore before we get into this? And if it's anything about the HARB stuff, I'd ask you that you hold off for a minute or two? Okay. Would anybody care to make the motion for code enforcement?
I'll make a motion to enact an ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the Code of Ordinances of the Borough of Gettysburg by adding a new Part 3 for the purposes of promulgating and implementing code enforcement provisions and regulation relative to the enforcement of certain quality-of-life codes and ordinances of the Borough of Gettysburg.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Um, and just for the benefit of the viewers at home and the folks here in the room, uh, this is, um, an ongoing effort on our part to accomplish two things. Um, to get residents and taxpayers, uh, more in compliance with the local ordinance, to keep our town looking as beautiful as possible, and also to remove, um, penalty from the criminal justice system, right? We, the, the goal here is not to create a, um, a system of, um, punishment. It is just to give the borough the tools to get people to comply with the ordinance, um, without having to go in front of a judge, so. Um, thanks to everybody for your hard work on this over the last several months. Thank you to the solicitor for writing this, and, uh, go get them, tiger. All right, um, so let's hand that microphone down to Ms. English there. I think we're going to get into it here. So, uh, the first thing that's notable about tonight's agenda is that we have, um, almost a full page dedicated to this, um, consent agenda. Uh, this is a relatively new practice for HARB. Uh, if it seems unfamiliar to council members, it's because it's pretty new as far as I can tell. Uh, a number of years ago, HARB was a, um, sort of a running gag in town. People had all sorts of clever nicknames for it, and HARB had a reputation for being a body that was, um, mired in rigidity, inaccessible to the public, and difficult to navigate. Uh, some years ago, council directed Ms. English to restructure some of the aspects of how applications that would go through her department for historic review would be handled. Um, she was instructed to engage in a process of administrative approval, and if I say anything that's incorrect here, please correct me before it's permanently etched in the public record. Not everything that happens in the historic district needs the full review of, um, of a board of, you know, it's a combination of professionals and citizens. Some things, even though it's happening in the, um, historic district, are fairly minor, especially if you've already had the work approved by HARB for one section of your house and you're doing the identical work to, um, another section. Uh, it was deemed by council that administrative approval is not only, um, uh, allowable, but also preferred. Um, the, the imperative that HARB, like any other body in the borough, be able to complete a full agenda in the time allotted to have an efficient, productive meeting is just as important for council it is for planning for zoning. HARB meetings had a reputation for going on sometimes three, four, or five hours. And if at the end of four hours, they didn't make it through the agenda, your item could be tabled for another month. So, uh, council was very intentional and mindful in its, um, attempts to sort of streamline the process as well as to, um, change the way HARB interacts with applicants as well, uh, and to make the process um, a wee bit less of a pinch point. So, new to our, um, processes this year is a consent agenda. So we have here about a page wool, full of items that ended up on the consent agenda. Can you explain the function of the consent agenda to me, please, Deb?
Yes. The, earlier in your statement, you said that if there were something approved on the house and they wanted to expand it to other areas, um, that was requested, I believe, to put that on the consent agenda as well. Normally, we would do administrative approval, which would not go through HARB. So that was one little change that, um, the new chair, Mr. Stone, did to have more public comment on some of the projects coming through. So the administrative, um, process would be only through me, and that would be more or less in-kind work. So if you had a shingled roof and you were replacing it with shingles, then we would go through and approve that administratively. If you had a slate roof, you're replacing with slate, but if you had, say, a tin roof and you were replacing it with a, maybe a standing seam, that is a change in material and look, so that would go through either consent agenda or the regular full agenda. And I'd usually coordinate with the, um, chair to find out if they, you know, where they would like to see that fall within the actual, you know, HARB review agenda. So the administrative on the, um, agenda tonight, the first, uh, one, two, I guess about the first ten, and it includes, um, Ms. White's project that they were, uh, speaking of earlier, would be administrative review and not through HARB. And then the second, um, under C, HARB motions needing council action included the, um, consent agenda and then the full HARB review. So the consent agenda would be items that could be blocked together and approved as a whole. So there may be four items on there, and they're kind of minor changes, but material changes. Um, so then HARB would kind of vote on the whole consent agenda or pull one out for further discussion. And then the full HARB review, which is after the first three, first three are labeled consent agenda, then the full HARB would have, um, you know, a, an individual that would discuss the project, present the project to the HARB board, and, um, answer and, and, you know, discuss the, the project as a whole. I, I hope that answers your question.
It, it does. Um, so, uh, in conversation earlier today with the manager, um, he sort of indicated to me that we have included this full breakout of this consent agenda here as a sort of a introductory thing for council. Um, you know, do we want to see this information presented in this manner? Do we trust that the Architectural Review Board is going to handle, you know, these applications in an appropriate manner? You know, there's all sorts of ways we can look at it, but do we want to continue to see this broken out here as part of the agenda? Um, personally, I think this belongs in our informational packet. Um, there's nothing about these, I think, that, you know, shows they have to be read into the agenda as part of the, you know, official record of this meeting, so. Um, what are people's opinions on seeing this information like this or not?
And President Moon, all of these, um, administrative approvals are in your, um, monthly reports and have been. So they're generally the ones that I would do administratively that we don't normally put on here, which would be your first eleven under, um, Number 2 A and B. And then C would be the ones that would read through council for a motion, unless you wanted to remove the consent agenda items, which would be, uh, more of a little more detailed administrative approval, technically.
Council? Do you want to continue to see the consent agenda broken out this way in the, in the agendas?
I mean, my opinion is it doesn't, it do, it doesn't add a whole lot more reading. I'm reading it anyway, whether I'm reading it in my, in our council fi, folders, but what this does for the public is transparency. So it's not hurting me. I'm reading it anyway.
Right.
So I don't, I don't, I don't see what it would hurt.
Anyone else?
Do we have to approve these, these first ones?
No, there's no motion.
Okay.
They would be for informational purposes only, but the consent agendas would be under the emotion if you wanted to keep them there, which is the second portion.
Okay, so I, I think we'll leave it in for the time being. Um, and if at some point in the future we decide it becomes unwieldy, we can always revisit that. Um, so as you've written the, as, as the staff has written the agenda today, this first section, um, two, section sub, subsection B is just here for informational purposes, but then each project is then referenced in a, in a subsequent motion? Am I understanding that correctly?
I don't believe so. That would just be for informational purposes, and I don't believe any motion is required for the first eleven. And then on C, um, there's a HARB motions needing council action, which would include the consent agenda and the regular full review HARB items.
All right. So, does anybody have any further thoughts on that? All right, so, um, I, I do think we need to spend some time here, and we do need to talk about COA 250031, minor project, 95 Steinware Avenue, Jaclyn White for relocation of the main dwelling at 95 Steinware Avenue, 299 Steinware Avenue along Washington Street. Um, so this initiative came before, uh, HARB previously. It came before council previously. Uh, HARB had denied the demolition of a structure. Council was, um, sort of, I don't know, encouraged to overrule HARB. Um, the solicitor was kind enough to explain, um, how that's really not feasible here. So it, it does seem that the application for the, what's happening here at, at 95, um, Ste, Steinware has changed. It doesn't have necessarily the demolition of one of the two deemed historic structures uh, that face, um, Steinware, but my understanding is that even the, the block building that would be demolished um, would qualify for preservation under the ordinance. Is that not the case?
Yes, it was over fifty years old, so they did go through HARB and, um, discuss the demolition and had to fill out a demolition checklist, because they are removing that, um, down to baseline, so.
So then to Mr. Stone's, um, comment here and public comment, how is picking up a building, destroying its foundation, and recreating its foundation a minor project? Moving a building, how, how is that minor?
I don't know if John, determination.
Yeah, so with that, the applicant has indicated that the entire structure, entirety, including the elements of the foundation that are exposed, would be moved in whole. Um, the actual method of which should probably be discussed with the applicant. Um, I'm not sure if Jackie's in attendance. Yes, she is, so you may want to discuss that with the applicant tonight, um, the feasibility of such a move. But I think the issue that we've run into and that staff explored in, um, the staff report this evening, the, um, relocation aspect hasn't been addressed by HARB to date. At least, we haven't found any information that HARB has reviewed relocation of structures. We're just, in terms of the minor project criteria of the ordinance, it does seem to be an oversight that could be corrected with a text amendment relatively easily. That would be something we can't explore for future projects.
But it wouldn't affect this current application?
I believe in this would be something I'd, I'd look to Mr. Eastman, that they would have a certain vested rights since already supplying an application.
Without, without having to research that and properly review it and so forth, um, I do agree with Mr. Whitmore on the concept of vested rights, essentially, that, I mean, in other words, that you have a, a right to have whatever ordinance is in place at that particular time to be the one that is, um, applied, if you will, so.
So I'm asking as a layperson who doesn't understand the particulars of, you know, um, planning, zoning, and property law as thoroughly as you do, what is the justification for the classification of this as a minor project?
The justification is that it meets the criteria of being the same materials, they're just moving them. Just moving them or having them move to a different location on a parcel is not addressed in the ordinance for scrutiny, it, with regards to a major project or a minor project.
So the relocation, in your opinion, is not specifically addressed in the ordinance as it exists today?
Yes, I would agree with that, yeah.
All right. So Mr. Stone has stated that under Section 11-104 of the Historic District Ordinance explicitly requires HARB review for various project treatments, including alteration, construction, and demolition. All three of those things seem like they would be happening here to some, some degree. Relocating a building, he says, which necessarily involves demolishing and rebuilding, clearly falls within with both the intent and the wording of this requirement. He then alleges that, in this instance, the borough has circumvented this review process by classifying the relocation as a minor project. I mean, he does, I, I think, very fairly point out that this seems like, um, exploitation of a loophole that does undermine the spirit and intent of the Historic Preservation Ordinance. You guys, is that off? Is that on? Kind of in the middle?
I mean, I wouldn't necessarily say it's a loophole. It's just it's something that isn't thoroughly addressed in the ordinance. It, the applicant's ability to utilize the law at the time, I mean, that's, that gets into like a normative, like, the problem that we're seeing is just that it hasn't been addressed. Um, there, the projects, all minor and major projects are reviewable by council. Other aspects of the project are going to be reviewed. So if council wanted to make a determination regarding the relocation, I mean, that's something that staff can follow.
So, uh, then my next question to Harry would be, so since this is not something that HARB took a vote on, this was done administratively, what is the, um, mechanism if council or a, you know, a majority of council were to say, hold up, this doesn't smell quite right? Like, what, what would we do here where something has been done by administrative approval as opposed to an act of HARB? You're afraid I was going to ask that?
No, I wasn't afraid. I, it's just not something that's particularly clear, because of course, the co, whole concept of administrative approval is that final approval has been made by the folks that, um, you have administratively appointed to carry out certain duties and, and. I think, and I guess, one of the things that's a little bit confusing to me on this is, and I guess, one of the things that's a little bit confusing to me on this is I thought that that was part of what council directed back in, in, was it June? June or July? Sorry, I don't. But I, I thought that council remanded it, but the remand was to Harb to see whether or not something could be
That's correct.
looked at and so forth. So I would have anticipated that this matter, one of the things was, I think, a relocation, or that was one of the possibilities. One of the things that's confusing to me procedurally is why is this not coming back to us from Harb?
Yeah. No, I absolutely agree.
And it's hard because we don't really have a mechanism to deal with essentially these administrative approvals.
Right.
However, I mean, I do think that if council believed that the process was not handled in the fashion that council intended it to be, when you remanded this, that matter to Harb, I think you could take action to, remand it to Harb, say, look, that was our intent, that the specific, this particular structure and its relocation or, I mean, at that point, the issue was purely demolition. But again, as I understand it, it was remanded to look at alternate options, one of which may have been relocation. That's what I understood. But again, I think as appropriate for council, you have a, you have a board Harb that is specially appointed. They have certain credentials and so forth, that you're mandated under state law to appoint people. And again, I would have anticipated that this matter would have come back, not under a consent or under a administrative process, that it would, it would have to come back, back from Harb, if you will.
Yeah. That, that's a really good point. So here are some examples of things that were specifically identified as scenarios. We would want to help an applicant more readily get through the process with an administrative approval rather than going through the full Harb review. You have a historic, you have a house in the historic district. You want to put energy efficient windows on your house. As seen from the street, is it possible to use a lookalike contemporary material that might be more energy efficient? Or do you have to do what Harb was requiring five or six years ago, where you had to have one of, I'm going to exaggerate to make a point, one of six skilled artisans on the east coast handcrafted wooden window that exactly matches the techniques used in 1881 when the house was built. The cost for the contemporary lookalike, lookalike materials might be $900 per window. The cost for the artisanal, handcrafted window might be $8,000. And yes, I'm making up numbers there, but I'm also telling you stories that have actually happened to people here, right? Another scenario, right? Much of our low income housing in the borough tends to be in the historic district. So you decide you need satellite internet service for your house. The only place to put the dish is on a south facing facade, and it might be on the street, and it might be visible from the street. That would be a violation of the historic preservation standards. But if it's the only option open to you, and it's dramatically cheaper than other options, do we have the legal right or moral authority to tell somebody, no, I'm sorry, you don't get to have internet? I mean, flashback, if you will, to 2020, when everybody's kids had to be on the internet at all times, you know? The people in our, in our community who didn't have that access suffered because of it. So those are the types of things we were helping, hoping to divert from the full Harb review process and give to our trusted career staff for these administrative reviews. I also, I mean, I understand John's description of how this got here tonight, but it does, it does feel a little off to me, right? We did, as a body, remand this back to Harb. And here we have the classification of this as a minor project that Harb did not review that does not seem to be consistent with our processes and ordinance. So I think that's what we need to deliberate here on, for a few minutes to try to, we need to kick the tires on this before we move forward.
Mr. Chairman, as they
We, we may call on you in a minute here. This is going to be council's time to deliberate. Thank you.
So I'm just going to comment on your last statement about, we did push, we did ask for this to go back to Harb. And the addresses that we're talking about was 95 and 99. Technically, they did go back to Harb because we have on our agenda the motion to accept Harb recommendation, one for 99 and one for 95. I understand they're completely different, there's a completely different COA in the consent agenda, but to be fair, it did go back to Harb. Now, did all of it go back to Harb? That's not what we said. We, we said, take this idea to Harb. They did. But they also followed the administrative law that we have here with administrative approval. When we go down the road of saying loopholes, we've been down that road before, and we've gotten into lawsuits over it. I think the applicant is following what the letter to the law is there. Does it smell fishy? Maybe. Maybe not. Could be a question of opinion. But it did, they did take it back to Harb. And as we see, we've got some there, the exact same addresses, 95 and 99.
But substantially
Steinware. Substantially different, but two different, two different, three different, four. Am I counting correctly? Four different applications of how to deal with the project. I believe what we said was we need to go back to Harb. And I believe we even said, would the applicant and, and Mr. Stone work together? And they said they would, they would. I don't know who else on staff. I don't know if Main Street Gettysburg was a part of that. I'm getting a nod from Jill. I think that when people can get together to collaborate, to come up with a solution, I'm all for it. It's not going to please everyone. It's not. But you tried and you fought. The applicant is following the letter to the law of what the borough ordinance is. And that's my statement.
You know, I agree with Mr. Carr on that. We wanted it to go back. The main thing was demolition, and we stopped, that stopped that from happening. I think we have the best house-moving business in the country that's going to do it. So I think that's good. But we also have, like, we have Destination Gettysburg, Main Street Gettysburg, Adams County Historical Society, the Steinware Neighborhood Bid, all supporting this project.
Yeah, as well as neighbors. Ms. Sanders?
Yeah. So I first noticed the change from, with the specific COA 250031, from major project to minor project, so that I assumed that was what took place during the Harb meeting. And then we hear from Mr. Stone tonight that Harb did not specifically approve of the relocation. Am I right? Or am I wrong? Did they approve of the relocation? I know they approved of those other things on the consent agenda, but the relocation is what I think it boils down to, not the entire, every single project out of the four applications. I think it was just the one, specific one. And I think the concern is not necessarily that they met, which was great, and that they had some agreement, or maybe some disagreements. But what happened during the meeting was that Harb approved of everything but one thing, and then that major project became a minor project without Harb review. And in my opinion, if something is going to be changed in that way, we need, I think, a better explanation as to why. And thank you, John. You did provide some information, considering that it would be then a minor project, given the definition of minor project in the ordinance. But Mr. Stone pointed out that, that the project also meets all three components of the major project, or what did he say, a critical project. So then I would want to know, for the sake of the ordinance, how, like, that thought press, process took place with respect to going from major to what could have been critical by Harb, and if Harb had any say in that, I'm not sure, to now a minor project. And if we decide that the second phase of the project is a minor project, are we not by the process of administrative review establishing an ordinance?
So the criteria that Mr. Stone cites as being foundational to the definition of a critical project are the demolition of all or part of the building. Is that correct? To the best of your knowledge?
I'd have to go back to
All right. So I'll read through, I'll read through. The demolition of all or part of the building, a change in configuration or rhythm, or an altercation to a sensitive building, which is a structure over 50 years old, or of architectural significance. So, I mean, demolition or all of part of the building and an alteration to a sensitive building, both deem this a critical project in Mr. Stone's assertion?
Well, I guess I would want to know then, did the other members of Harb or whoever was in the meeting, and I don't know who was in the meeting, did they also deem this a critical project? I mean, I think if they did not approve of the relocation, then they deemed it either critical or major, and weren't willing to approve of it because it was now titled minor.
Right. I mean, it seems that
I'm just trying to get the process clear. That's all, like, I'm
The, the assertion from staff that the most, the subject matter of the relocation is not specifically covered, and so therefore it's minor, does not, you know, because we didn't specify it, that makes it minor. But our failure to specify relocation as a criteria for a critical project does not negate the other criteria for a critical project, the demolition of all or part of a building, a change in the configuration, or an alteration to a sensitive building, which is a structure over 50 years old or of architectural significance. Like, all of those things are still true, whether the ordinance says anything about moving it or not.
Folks, I mean, honestly, we talk about that being a loophole. It is not. I mean, candidly, the relocation of a building should fall within the criteria. I mean, that, such a narrow reading, I think, defeats the purpose of your historic district ordinance. I mean, I think the relocation of a building has to come before Harb. And I don't think, I think if allowed to research that, I will, I could go back to the state statute, and I would find significant, I mean, essentially, I mean, we've created this ordinance. The thing that the state doesn't really have is this distinction between minor projects and major projects. It's something that we've put in place administratively. But I do not agree that there is that loophole. I believe that a relocation of a building has to come before Harb. It just has to. You sent it back to Harb. Harb didn't send it back to you. Or if they did, they sent it back in a way that maybe is not ambiguous, the fact that they would not rule on that item on the consent. So, I mean, I, honestly, folks, this is probably pretty clear that it should be remanded to Harb for Harb's review on that.
Patty, do you have an opinion here?
Thank, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I appreciate our solicitors' comments. I just was having a struggle trying to imagine the, you know, moving a building, a historic building as a minor project. And so I appreciate Mr. Eastman's clarification on that, and I agree with him, and I agree with my colleague, Lishawansel Sanders, as well.
I, I think the part that resonates here for me the most is not the splitting of the hairs as to whether it qualifies as critical or not. But as I recall, we were unanimous in our assertion that this would be remanded back to Harb, that Harb and the applicant needed to come to some sort of agreement as to how this could or could not be accomplished. And it seems like that has not happened. So I, I think it's problematic. How can we act on this if it's not on the actual agenda for a vote?
Yeah, that's the difficult thing that I was indicating at the beginning, because essentially, this is on your agenda for informational purposes only.
Right, right.
I do think that you do have the power to essentially reinforce your previous action. That, I mean, council had remanded it to Harb, and council wants to have Harb speak as to that. To see, I mean, again, as I understood the action, it was to see whether something could be worked out short of demolition of the, of the building. But so, I mean, I don't think you can act specifically on this. This is for informational purposes. But if council wants to reinforce that this matter has been remanded back to Harb for Harb's recommendation, and actually for the parties to work things out, I think you can emphasize that and indicate that what your, your action was not, was not specifically addressed, and is not being specifically addressed by this.
Right. And in fact, the motions in front of us tonight are a tacit blessing of the fact that this direction we gave was not, was not followed by the staff.
Chairman, excuse me, I'm wrong.
Okay. Again, this is council's opportunity to deliberate. If we have questions, we will ask you to come up to the podium. Thank you.
Mr. Whitmore, I think, wanted to, seemed like you were going to say something.
We do have two motions before council this evening. It would appear that there's concern, I guess, for the, regarding the demolition of the block garage, and then the relocation of the house. It sounds like there's leaning from council, and it's, I don't want to speak for council, but it sounds like there'd be an interest in having the relocation tied to the demolition, or to the second one, to the physical redevelopment of the park. So it does, I would think they could, you could, you could ask for Harb to review the, those COAs as such.
I do have, I do have a question for Mr. Stone, and I do have a question for Ms. White. Mr. Stone, would you mind taking the podium for a moment?
Yes, sir.
Given that at your last meeting, you would have been informed that the relocation of the building had been reclassified as a minor project, what was the deliberation that read, that led to Harb's approval of these two motions surrounding changes to 95, 99 Steinware Avenue?
So from my understanding, those are independent COAs submitted concurrently with this request. And so my, my belief is it was the intent to have all of the projects come in with review, with the idea that each are, on paper, independent, but each have a dependency on each other.
Right.
And so the block garage needs to be demolished to move the building into its location to free up the spot to put the Monument Park. And so I think that complicates the circumstance slightly. But my, in speaking with our vice chair, who was administering the meeting at the time, was the requests for each of those individual requests were reasonable and within Harb's sort of discretion to approve. As Ms. English alluded to, the checklist for the demolition of the garage met all of the borough requirements. The construction of the, the park met the space requirements once the space was freed up. I think at the heart of this, though, was the designation of moving a structure as a minor project. And the one correction I would try to help council understand is item B up there, where it says Harb administrative approvals, that is inaccurate. That is borough administrative approvals.
Right.
Which means that as a minor project, they are free to approve anything with neither yours nor Harb's review. And so the re-design And so, the redesignation of this project as minor was the result of our meeting with Jackie and the borough. So it was that meeting that it got redesignated, and I think Mr. Whitmore can attest to that.
Yeah, that's when the concept of having the project phased.
So, when you were saying that, Mr. Carr alluded to, that we met and had a sociable meeting, it did not happen that way. The result was the borough deemed it out of Harb's purview and took it away from us, and then made it a minor project, hence where we are at now.
Is that a fair characterization of what happened?
I don't necessarily agree with all the, the tone of the language, but the project was changed in a manner that preserved the both structures, that was what we, where we were working with, I was working with, I'm saying, we, staff was working to facilitate the applicant's, the project, with the understanding that there were certain aspects that were challengeful. Now, we're getting direction tonight that's contrary to that, with regard, I think, I believe staff provide you their justification on how we've come to this.
So, here's, here's, where I, I'm experiencing a little frustration here, when we remanded this back to Harb, we remanded it to Harb, the panel, not to two members of Harb in a private meeting in this room on a Tuesday morning with staff. That was not what we asked to have done. So if this change was a result of that meeting, that was not what was instructed. It was communicated to staff that what we did want to have established very quickly after that meeting was a meeting between Deb, yourself, Harry, and Harb members to talk about how Harb is operating this year. To the best of my knowledge, that meeting has still not happened, that's the meeting that was supposed to happen here in chambers. The public meeting with Harb where this was remanded back has still never occurred. So that's, that's frustrating to me. I think... Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Stone? Alright, I do have a couple of questions from Ms. White, if you wouldn't mind. Please, and thank you. With this relocation as, as you've envisioned it, what happens to, I'm just gonna, I know this might not be what you're referring to as, what happens to the Sears House, right? It is relocated behind the Red House?
I'm sorry, what's the...
The yellow house, the yellow house right next to your parking lot.
The Victorian.
That's the building being relocated, yes?
Correct.
And so that goes just behind the Red House where the, the cinder block structure is currently?
Correct.
And will it be flipped around to front on Washington, or how are the houses situated?
No, it will be situated the same as it is now.
So, front to back, front to back, with the, the rear of the yellow Victorian would be facing, fronting on Washington Street?
Right, with, with a door in the back.
Had any thought been given to flipping it around to front on the street?
Yes.
And was that...
It was economically unviable, it costs twice as much.
To, this is the act of spinning, I imagine it's unwieldy. Alright.
But I would like to make some comments.
Well, I gave you an opportunity for that.
Thank you.
Does anybody here on council have anything they, they would like to ask about the application?
I'd like to hear Ms. White.
I'd like to hear from the applicant.
Say whatever she wants to say.
Great.
This project, as, as I told you last time, in July, has been something that has been wanted for, on Steinware Avenue since 2009, when we created the Steinware bid. And so, we came to Harb in May, they said, "No, you cannot move one building and tear down another building, we don't like that." And Harb said, according to the minutes, that they requested that we get together and have, find a, quote, "viable solution." So that's what we did, we sat down with some borough officials, and some, Brandon and Gary Schaefer, and talked about some different ideas, and we came up with the idea of keeping the 99 Steinware Avenue and not demolishing it, and then moving 95. It was a compromise, a compromise between all of us, and even at that meeting, I remember, Brandon, you said, "Well, I'd go along with that." He said that. So then, we went back to Harb in July, July 16th, and Harb looked at our compromise, and they agreed, and said, "Yes, we accept this." So I, I don't understand what's going on here tonight, now whether, what's between you and the administration, that's, that's not me, that's, that's not my fault or anything, but I, as, as a, and I'm, I'm sorry, my attorney's not here, that, I can't wait to talk to him about this, to say, you know, you did everything right as the applicant, you got all the proper documentation that you needed, you went through Harb, you got approval, and now you're saying, "No"? I, I don't understand that, that's, that's not right. It's just not right, we did, I did everything right.
So, I, I don't want to give the impression that the deliberation, that we have a responsibility to have here over this, is us saying that you didn't do things correctly, or, and again, just as the last time you were here, this, the deliberations we're having are not about the propriety of the project you've proposed, it's about how the law is being applied here.
Right.
And the last time you came here to us, you had lots of people from the community all insisting that council had to break the law for you, and we just can't.
We did not insist on anything that we would have you break the law.
We were being asked to overturn Harb without...
You were twisting the whole fact of everything.
Ma'am, ma'am, that's exactly what was being asked of us.
That is not true.
Council was being asked to overturn Harb without a legal reason to do it, and we didn't have the ability to do it. So that, for us, is the question.
So, so, Harry, I, I ask you, okay, I, I, we, I went through Harb, they agreed to it, and so here we are tonight, can't we, what, what, if you're gonna send me back and say, "Start over again"? That is not right, and I will not accept that.
Mr. Stone, is it your recollection that in the meeting that was held here in this room, that you and Mr. Schaefer stated that you could get behind the compromise that was offered?
He did, he did.
As a contrary, our concern was that, as proposed right now, the back of the building is going to be put on South Washington. My ask specifically of Ms. White was to identify how much effort, how expensive it would be to rotate the building. I never actually heard a response back to that, neither written or verbal, but that until right now.
I just told you.
So, that is our concern, from a streetscape perspective, putting a rear of a structure that has no windows on it on a street is abnormal.
You know what's there right now? The back of a garage with three garage doors that are open every day, and the houses across the street look at all the junk that is inside that garage. I mean, you want it to, you want Gettysburg to be better, you want it to be nicer for the people. This, what we're proposing would definitely be nicer.
Yeah.
You know, the, the community is behind this, the community wants this, and if we do this park, it's going to be something of beauty, it's going to be a better quality of life for the citizens of Gettysburg and our visitors, and most importantly, probably to you folks, it is going to bring a shot in the arm to Steinware Avenue, which right now has over seven properties for sale or going out. We need something, we need to make things better, and this is, this project will bring economic vitality to the area. To, to turn me down again, I just think is totally unfair, and I will fight it, it's not right.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
So, we've heard Harry's legal opinion, we've heard Mr. Whitmore's description of the limitations of the existing ordinance, we've heard an impassioned plea from the applicant, and we've heard some thoughtful critique from the head of Harb. I don't really know what, what the right course of action is here, right? I mean, we're, if we, if we were compelled to continue to remand this back to Harb, we would be costing the applicant a considerable amount of time, but we also, as a body, have to be insistent that when we give an instruction to one of our ABCs or our staff, that it is followed, because that is the way our government functions, and so that didn't happen here. That's, so, that's problematic as well. Did you want to opine here, Harry?
Yeah, the, my one thought is, is it was represented that Harb was in agreement with this, and I, I cannot help but think that if, because you did remand this to Harb, is, let's find out, I mean, you're not getting that from Harb, you need to hear back from Harb whether this all is in agreement in terms of, and one of those components is the relocation.
Well, I'll just make a comment that if I'm reading the minutes correctly, the people that were in the room at that Harb meeting are not in the room right now.
Right.
Staff is. Harb?
Jill, Matt, Charles, Jack, myself, the only person asked is Gary.
You were, you were in the meeting on July 16?
Correct.
No, not according to the minutes.
The, the actual Harb minutes, correct?
Yep, according to the Harb minutes, you weren't there, so I, yeah, so we're in that conundrum there.
Yeah.
Mr. Eastman, that we're getting, you know, who knows, except for the people that were in there. You know, and I'm... If I recall correctly, at least my recollection from that meeting about us sending it back to Harb, my recollection was that that project, we can't, we cannot do what they were asking at the time, and we sent it back to Harb, with recommendation, if I recall correctly, that we wanted people to get together and collaborate, such as staff and Main Street and Harb and the applicant. What, I thought that that happened, maybe it didn't happen exactly as some of us on council would have liked, but there is, there's a point that we get into the weeds too much, and we have a professional staff for a reason, and we have great partners in the community, such as Main Street and Destination. We hope that these people will gather together and collaborate together. Some folks are saying that, no, it's not happening that way, and this minor project shouldn't be administrative approved. Some folks are saying that, according to, you know, that it, that it is a minor project. I, I, again, it's a, you know, difference of opinions.
Well, I, I am saying, I am saying that the relocation of a building is not a...
Right, sure.
And I'm giving you legal advice in that regard.
Sure, absolutely, I appreciate that, but what I'm saying is, if these other doc, these other, because we can't even, the minor project, let's put that aside, because it's not up for us to vote on. What's up for us to vote on is things on the Harb recommendation.
Right.
So, I, I say we should vote on them.
No, I agree.
And, and let the vote fall.
I agree.
I do not think that this should go back to Harb. It could be that people were, that were in that meeting at July 16th were under the understanding that that building would be moved, and that then, this could, the rest of these motions, maybe, maybe not, but these motions are on the table, I'm ready to vote for them.
Yeah, alright, so I'll say this in conclusion.
And my advice was not to reband the items that are properly in front of you. My concern is that the process was not handled correctly based on your original instruction in June, and you should be, the council is entitled to have that go back before Harb. Again, Harb has architects on that board, they're specialized people that you should be able to rely on for advice, and it's not clear that that has come back. But, I will say this, I'm not recommending remanding those matters that are properly on your, on, on your agenda. I think you have to act on those as your ordinance compels you to.
Alright, so here's what I'd like to say in conclusion, and you're right, we need to just vote the matters in front of us, this newfound fad we have of tabling all of our own hard work has got to come to an end here at some point. This was not handled correctly, there were clear directions given, and they were not I'm going to ask Deb and John and Harry to find a time to work together, you'll probably want to pull in Charles, and you're going to work around Mr. Stone's schedule, as he's the only one who's here in a volunteer capacity. We need to lock down how Harb is operating, because you've got complaints about the way the staff is interpreting the ordinance, the staff has complaints about the way you've interpreted the ordinance, and what we're left with here over these last few months is a lot of contention, and a lot of these meetings where Harb does not seem to be functioning correctly. So, I think this needs to be a front burner item for our staff here, we need to figure this out, and we need the solicitor's guidance on it. Alright, would anybody care to make the first motion under the Harb?
I'll make a motion to accept the Harb Consent Agenda Recommendation for COA-250048, Major Project 136 West High Street, Christopher Garpstas, for the installation of wrought iron classic-style railings to the front and rear entrance.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. The next one, please, 227 Baltimore.
I'll make a motion to accept the Harb Consent Agenda Recommendation for COA-250059, Major Project 227 Baltimore Street, Amy Mazook Dell, for the replacement of rear vinyl porch windows with screens, and the replacement of the existing six-foot rear fence with a new metal fence.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? The motion carries. Another motion for 227 Baltimore.
I'll make a motion to accept the Harb Consent Agenda Recommendation for COA-250060, Major Project 227 Baltimore Street, Amy Mazook Dell, for the repair and repainting of trim doors, soffit and fascia, repointing of brick and replacement of Dutch lap siding, and the repair and extension of the eve of the rear porch, and the replacement of the metal roof gutters and downspouts.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? The motion carries. 606 York.
I'll make a motion to accept the Harb Consent Agenda Recommendation for COA-250046, Major Project 606 York Street, Drone Family Trust, for the installation of two awnings, one located at the front entrance and one located at the western side of the building.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. 340 Baltimore.
I'll make a motion to accept the Harb Recommendation for COA-250038, Major Project 340 Baltimore Street, Borough of Gettysburg, Charles, Charles R. Borough of Gettysburg, Charles Argable, for the new construction of a welcome center as it relates to the presented drawings and that any significant changes to the exterior design elements be brought back to the board for review.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. 99 Steinware.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the Harb recommendation for COA-250056, major project 99 Steinware Avenue, Jacqueline White, for the demolition of a rear nondescript CMU block garage.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. 95 Steinware.
I'll make a motion to accept the Harb recommendation for COA-250062, major project 95 Steinware Avenue, Jacqueline White, for the installation of monuments to house documents as appropriate in a park in the historic district.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. For the members of the public and for Ms. White, I know that that was painful. And we've been through it several times over the last few months. I know I haven't made any friends in this side of the room. This is our responsibility to have these hard conversations. So I apologize if anybody is frustrated with it, but this is, this is our legal responsibility. We'll move to the parking department. Ms. Fissell.
I did have two other little comments if I can make those in my report.
Please, sorry.
No worries. On October 18th, we are going to have another e-cycle event. So that is scheduled and you can register that online or through me. And our online payment system for our Gettysburg Stormwater Authority fees will be shut down for digital payments only from August 13th to possibly August 20th as we're transferring software systems. So I just wanted to let folks know they won't be able to make an online payment, but you still may mail in your checks for your stormwater fees. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. I didn't mean to skip over the end there.
Had a lot going on.
Did anybody have any further questions for Deb? All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Parking. Ms. Fissell.
Good evening. You have my report. I have the comparisons there as normal. Just a couple of things to point out. The RPPs are due. The new ones start September 1st. We did have 250 of them last year. To date, 55 have renewed already. So if you haven't renewed, renew now. And 18 LPPs purchased in July, 19 for the third quarter. So those are up as well. The meters are currently still being certified. So you may see some that have no insides to them. They are generally, takes about two to three hours and are put back in. So if you don't see something in there, that's probably what's happening. They are, the Public Works Department is line painting this week and next week. So there will also be signs posted on some streets, on some meters, some lots for no parking. And those are posted on the signs. So if you see some signs, that's what those are. And I think that's about it, other than the motions.
All right. So before we get into the motions, are there any questions for Beckham?
Yes. Ms. Fissell, you had in the full, in the parking department folder, some Hillcrest photos, July 28 and 29. Did you or parking staff take these photos?
I took those photos. The evening photos were taken actually when I left here on the, I believe it was the 28th, after the workshop meeting on the 28th. I just decided to go over there and see what it looked like at, I bet 9:15, 9:30 at night. And then I went back the next day. And those are, then that's when I realized I should probably timestamp the photos. So I had them time stamped and I forget, I think it was 10 o'clock in the morning. And some of those vehicles, you can see, are the same vehicles. Some are also out of state, New Jersey, Virginia. So people are parking there that probably are not residents there.
To your knowledge, thank you, to your knowledge, on that street, do we have any Airbnbs?
I do not know of any Airbnbs on that street. I do know that I've talked to a lot of people on that street, a lot of the residences. And there are renters, there are homeowners. There are some people that, there's at least three houses, I believe, that are second homes. So that could be, also be some of the out of states, but I'm not positive.
Since there are no, sorry.
Mr. Griffey is shaking his head no on the Airbnb.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Since there are no parking meters on that, do we, it's still a borough street, but does parking department have any authority on the way people park on that street?
So that street does have lines.
Yep. That's my question because they're not parking correctly.
Correct.
Whatsoever.
Correct. And that's not, that's generally not a street that, I mean, we can do anything with other than on lines. So it's, you know, we have very limited staff and to patrol the entire borough. So, you know, we're doing meters, we're doing residential, we're in the parking garage. We're, so that is not a problematic street in the past. So we do rely on residents to call us if there are issues like this going on because they can point us to them and that is very helpful for our department.
Sure. Thank you.
All right. Would anybody care to make the first motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize a solicitor to prepare a proposed ordinance for the purpose of designating certain areas at the northern portion of Hillcrest Place, near its intersection with Locust Avenue on both the eastern and western sides of such public street as residential parking permit street areas for inclusion in the borough's residential parking permit system as regulated pursuant to Chapter 15, Part 10, excuse me, of the Code of Ordinances of the Borough of Gettysburg.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. As written, this does, this leaves a lot to, for example, designation of certain areas, but it doesn't describe specifically, well, at the northern portion.
And I would be clear that this is for the preparation of an ordinance. That ordinance would come back to you with the details and the clarification of what the areas would be. Certainly based on the discussion at the work session, it would be my intention, I certainly drafted that motion for inclusion on the agenda. Essentially, as I would anticipate preparing that ordinance, it would just be, there would be just portions, which we're allowed to do on Hillcrest, and it would only be in front of the properties of the people who signed the petition requesting. It would not go any further up. And essentially, even though, and I've told you, this is not a petition process that we're in, although it could become a petition process. The, the concept is, is that you, I mean, there have been people that have clearly petitioned you for, we would just include in front of their properties. All of the people who have said no would not, they would not, that would not be part of the, the area.
Thank you. And one more question on this. It was mentioned tonight that, in public comment, that non-residents would still be able to park there. But residential parking permit only is, residential parking permit only. How do you ju, how do you, and it's voluntary. It's, they're not required to get an RPP. But if they were, is, remind the public, Ms. Fissell, about that. Don't they have to show a proof of residency on that street or that area?
Correct. So for residential parking, it is only two hours. So you can park less than two hours and not have a permit. Anything more, you would need a permit. For the residential permit, you do have to provide, the very first time you apply, you do have to provide residence requirements. So it's a lease or your, your mortgage statement, something like that, your vehicle registration and a utility bill. And that does account for corner properties as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. The next motion, please.
I'll make a motion to authorize the solicitor to proceed with the preparation of a proposed ordinance for the purposes of making and incorporating comprehensive revisions, modifications and amendments to the borough regulations relative to motor vehicle, motor vehicles and traffic as set forth in Chapter 15 of the Code of Ordinances of the Borough of Gettysburg.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Counsel will remember that this is the review of Chapter 15, which we did over the last several months with Ms. Fissell's help and Madrigal's help. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Any last minute questions for Ms. Fissell? All right. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Public Works, Mr. Harbaugh.
Good evening. You all should have my report in your file. Couple highlights on my report. Yes, the Public Works crew last week did the crosswalk lines and the intersections, the double yellow lines around town. And we will be doing some day painting. We did that at night to avoid traffic problems during the day. So we did that at night. And we'll be painting RPP and some other lines during the day this week and next week. So the line painting, trying to get the line painting done before school starts. Deck maintenance project, the contractor was working on the three stairwells for the stair treads. The stair treads are, majority of them are complete. There's a few of them that they may have to change. There's some hollow spots underneath there, so. And then they'll be moving to level four above the restrooms to crack seal above the restrooms. Our 902 grant, recycling grant, LEFAK truck is here. It is in service. It will be ready for leaf season this fall. And we received our training. The last thing that I have, I was tasked by Charles to talk about the HVAC system on the roof, on, above the office, not this rooftop unit above council chambers. So I don't know if you've got any word or heard anything, but Bike Week of Bike Week, that weekend, rooftop unit upstairs on the office, on the roof, that unit took a crap and it quit working. And it did not work the whole weekend. And Monday morning, when staff came in, of course, the police department suffered over the weekend. But on Monday morning, when staff come in, it was like 83 to 90 degrees in the building. So we had HVAC control unit, or the, our HVAC contractor come in. They looked at the unit, got the unit up and running again, but we are down a compressor. The roof unit has two compressors on it. The second compressor is inoperable, needs to be replaced. They found some other control issues. And so we discussed with them since 20, or I'm sorry, yes, since 2018, maybe a little further as far as I researched back, I could find, actually Tammy researched back. We spent $87,361.91 on that system up there. And so it's starting to nickel and dim this death. And our HVAC contractor recommended that we replace the unit. Because it's going to cost probably another $15,000 to replace the compressor and the bearing and the, the condenser. So that we come up with quotes to replace rooftop unit number one, which is above the office. Unit number two, we did not discuss. That rooftop unit is $1027,932. The controls that need to be replaced with that unit, and we're also going to replace the controls to the unit above here because those, those controls are failing. Their electronic controls, their damper controls are failing. That's sort of the reasons why when people come into their offices or in here and it seems hot, but the AC is set for 68 degrees, is because the damper control units stopped working. They are Honeywell controls. The quote for the new controls will be INATEC. And that control package is $72,494. Guess we're looking for some guidance from council, what they would like to do.
So the two options before, well, so currently the building is operating with window units, right?
It is, yes.
Which is not an ideal solution.
Right. And some of the windows in this building will not open.
Right. There's that too. So the options before us are either to replace the compressor and bearings for...
It's going to be anywhere from $15,000 to $20,000.
About $20,000. Or to replace the entire failing system and control for around 200. Fixing the compressor isn't going to deal with the failing control system, though.
No.
All right. So there's the question there.
Can I start with questions? Sergeant Evans, does the police department have window units? Because, do you have windows? Do you have window units right now?
Yeah, we do.
Okay. So you have some?
It's, it's cool. So it's tolerable. Can I, so you asked that question. So we do have one compressor in the unit on the roof working, but it cannot keep up with...
Right, the entire building.
Entire building. So that's why the unit, window units were...
When and temporarily. Yeah, no. And that's not a long-term solution. I understand that.
And our HVAC contractor also, they said that the rooftop unit that we have, which was installed in 2010, it is sized for the building correctly. It's just wearing out.
Right. Oh, yeah. Yeah. No, I, I had to replace one too myself.
This one may be next, but...
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Because it's probably was installed around the same time.
This one isn't as bad, isn't near as bad a shape as the one on the roof.
When we were here two weeks ago, this one sounded like it was...
That was repaired and that cost to repair that was...
Expensive.
I have it here. I did have it here. That was $2,663.
Well, I, I think if anyone owns a home or a commercial building and has ever had to redo their entire HVAC, they know.
I mean, the, the HVAC contractor, they're not the ones that installed it in 2010.
Yeah.
But they took over, Sarah, roughly...
2018.
20, 2018.
I believe 2018.
Yeah. They said we cut. The average lifespan is 13 to 15. So we actually got our money's worth out of that unit.
Yeah. Thank you.
It is an old building. How, do we know the year this section of the building dates back to? It's pre-Civil War, right?
This section?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, this was the prison, right? It is, it is hard to keep an old building intact. If we lose our climate control, it's going to start to decay pretty quickly. Not just for the comfort of our staff. I think we have a responsibility to repair what's broken, but also for the ongoing preservation of this asset to the borough. I think I would advocate replacing the units that are in question. Anybody have a strong feeling against that? Ms., Patty, do you have anything to add?
Now, I did have a question for Mr. Harbaugh, though. And I, it's such an old building and a big building, but... and a big building, but have you looked into the feasibility of like mini splits or heat pumps that would, in certain sections of the building at all, Robbie?
We have not, because the, the building is, is... Duck work for a complete unit, rooftop unit.
Central on the top, okay. I just, I just wondered about that. Okay, thank you.
So I feel like I'm hearing a lot of consent that we need to just bite the bullet and repair this.
Absolutely.
I don't think we have a question, do we?
No, no.
I think we have to do it.
Yeah.
And, and this, this quote is dated for a short time amount.
Yeah, yeah.
Because quotes keep changing.
Yeah.
Yeah, they sure do. All right. Do you have what you need to proceed from us?
I think so. Yes.
Great. All right. Any last questions for Mr. Harbaugh?
No, just, yes, a question. Robbie, the light posts, the lamp posts, if we're, talk about Lincoln Square real quick. So we've got lamp posts on the interior of the square, the island. Then we've got lamp post on the exterior of the square, well, around the, you know, around the square. You know, around, you know, with the actual...
Yeah, we have, we have four...
Where the traffic is.
Yeah, we have four on the center plot of the square.
But then we also have lamp posts further in on the quads.
Correct.
Yeah, so, are those ours?
So, all of the decorative streetlights that are around the square.
Whether it's on the quad or the, you know, up against the curb or...
Let me back up. There is an exception.
Okay.
So the AC and B Bank Building?
Uh-huh.
Open Mines?
Yep.
They installed those two decorative lights.
On that quad.
That match ours, when they did, redid their entrance. They own them and maintain them.
And maintain them.
The rest, the ones back in the points in the corner?
Uh-huh.
Are the burrows.
Are the burrows. So for the, for the, so for example, the one at Hotel Gettysburg?
Yes.
Okay. Can you take a look at the one over by Hotel Gettysburg? It's been out for a while.
It's out?
Out. Did, not lit. Thank you.
I will.
All right. Any other questions, comments for Mr. Harbaugh? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Claybaugh, the Borough Engineer.
Good evening, counsel. You have a copy of my written report. I do have some updates, and there's some motions on your agenda. So I'll come back to Racehorse Alley parking garage, since there's a motion. The second item there is Breem Alley Channel Wall, and I didn't give you any updates on that this month, because I don't really know exactly when it's going to get built, but I can tell you that I had a conversation with Mark Geis, and he did say it's going to be sometime this fall. So, fingers crossed that that still will be done this year. It's just, I don't have an exact date yet. Next is the 2025 CDBG curb ramps. Again, there's a motion on your agenda. I'm going to come back to that one. The channel wall assessment, I can tell you that I had a conversation with the Borough Solicitor and the Stormwater Authority Solicitor as well, and we're progressing things. We did some deed research, started looking into that ownership discussion that we had. The next step is that, to reach out to the property owner, so we'll be doing that within the next couple of weeks here, and starting to get some more information on, on the, the survey of those properties. So stay tuned for more on that as we move forward. The Welcome Center, we did get the land development plan resubmitted to the Planet Commission. They did approve that land development plan, so the next step is, and of course, one of your agenda tonight was to approve the Harb meet, uh, motion. So the next step is for the bidding for that. So we're currently working with the architect to get them all of the, the contract drawings, the bidding specifications that they need to bid that project. So that's moving along smoothly. Nothing new with the Gateway Project this month. The Gettysburg Interloop Phase B Two bidding and construction project. Going to temper my enthusiasm with saying that it is substantially complete. It is. If you've seen the project, it looks pretty nice, aside from the trees that haven't been installed yet, because we're still in summertime. We wait for the fall to install trees. Aside from that, it's, it's substantially complete. The street's paved, line markings are done, curbs and sidewalks are done. Reason I started by saying, I'm going to temper my enthusiasm, is because there are a few issues that we're addressing. We have some, some things we're looking into with a sewer pipe, or some things we're looking into with a potential telephone pole installed into a storm pipe, and we got to do some televising before we can get, I can't give you the specifics of those, of those issues yet, because we just don't know yet. So we got to do some televising of those pipes, make sure that there's no issues where we're going to have to tear up some new concrete and new paving. So I did want to kind of give you a heads up that there is some, some things that we still got to look at. So although we are basically done with the project, it's unfortunately not going to go away just yet.
When is that televising being done?
So, so it's getting done through Gettysburg Municipal Authority because of the sewer component, permitting requirement for them. They are hoping to have that done soon. So I just emailed with Mark and Rob, like, on Thursday or Friday, they said soon. So I don't know what soon means. My guess is within the next two weeks. So I should have an answer for you. That's something that is high on their priority list as well. It's not something that, that we're going to, it's going to sit there for another month. Let's just say that.
I talked to Mark Geis about that today. He's scheduling a vendor to, to get that TV video work, but not sure when that's going to happen soon as possible.
So, more, like I said, more to come for that. The other thing that I believe, that is it, except for the motions that are on your agenda, there's two motions. The first one, so Robbie already gave you an update on the, the maintenance work that's being done to the Racehorse Alley Parking Garage. There is a motion on your agenda to pay the contractor forty-one thousand of their, their contract. It's just below seventy-one thousand. So this pays them for a little better than half of, of the work that's completed. I imagine the rest of the work, like Robbie said, will be done over the next month, and we'll pay them the rest next month. So that's fairly straightforward there, nothing different from what's in the contract. The other motion is for curb ramp replacements project to the lowest qualified responsive and responsible bidder, Kinsley Construction, at their bid of one hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Let me just stop on that one for a minute. So, you may have seen the bid tab, that the lowest bidder was Porter. There are some very key words listed in that motion. Qualified, responsive, and responsible. There's no question about Porter's qualifications, but there, there, the responsiveness was flagged by the county. They basically didn't submit the bid documents properly. The county is the administrators of the CDBG money that is being used for this project. So they recommended that we reject that low bid because of their non responsiveness and go with the second low bidder. So then we had to evaluate the other two bids, JVI and Kinsley. The way that we wrote the specs was it's based on base bid only. So according to the way that that's written, the next lowest bidder is Kinsley Construction at their, at their bid of one hundred and fifty-one thousand. So you do have a recommendation from the county and from the engineer to go with that, which is essentially the second lowest bidder, but it's the lowest qualified responsive and responsible bidder, Kinsley. So that is it for my report. Unless you have any other questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, the question, when you're doing the curb work, do you take into account how the rest of the sidewalk, the condition of it is? I'm thinking on Seminary, that's going to be one of the curb ramp replacements. You have that whole sidewalk, it's just coming up because of those huge trees. It'd be odd to do a replacement for handicap people and...
It's a great question, yeah. So, if you can remember, the, the original scope of this year's CDBG, whenever he's talking about the curb work, he's talking about the curb ramps, right? The ADA ramps, we call them. So, it's, it's odd to have an ADA ramp leading right to a sidewalk that's not ADA compliant because of the trees heaving the sidewalk. So that would be kind of a ramp to nowhere. The ones on Seminary are actually Hay Street.
Yeah, it's on Hay Street.
Hay Street.
Corner of Hay.
Have been eliminated from the scope from this year, primarily because we don't know what we're going to do with those, those very large trees, and that's one of the worst sections of sidewalk in all of the borough. And so because we're not really sure, we felt like it was a little premature to move ahead with those ramps along Hay Street. So those are not included in this scope. I don't know what the answer is, to be honest with you, that one. That's a, that's a, that's a tough nut to crack with, with that, that pro, that, that's, like I said, well, it's one of the, one of the harder locations in the borough.
Well, the answer is that we do that all the time, actually, but the solution, I think, is what's eluding you.
The solution is, is difficult. For, for now, the solution that's on the agenda is that we've eliminated that ramp from the scope, kicked the can, so to speak. At some point, we're going to need to address it.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions? All right. Let's get into those motions.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve application for payment number one to Arch Masonry, Inc. in the amount of forty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty cents for the Racehorse Alley Parking Garage Maintenance 2025 Project as recommended by the Borough Engineer.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. And the second one.
I'll make a motion to award the base bid items only for the FY two, twenty twenty-three curb ramp replacements project to the lowest qualified responsive and responsible bidder, Kinsley Construction, at their bid of one hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Any last minute questions for Mr. Claybaugh? All right. Thank you, sir. That's going to take us to the police department. Sergeant Evans, good evening.
Good evening. Counsel should have a copy of my report in their file. I would like to point out an update to the overtime usage portion. Looks like I fat fingered some numbers earlier, and the training should reflect forty, approximately forty hours. So that's going to drop the total number down to three hundred and ten hours, three hundred and ten point three hours, and it's going to drop the expenditures significantly down from twenty thousand to around approximately sixteen, seventeen thousand. So I just wanted to point that out, depending on when you last looked at a report. Any questions? I'm happy to answer for the, the council about their report. I know you're going to be voting on a motion for Master Patrol Officer William Orth. I just wanted to say that he's been doing an excellent job as the acting supervisor on, on the A Squad, so I just wanted to throw that out there. He's, he's done outstanding. Bike Week, Parade of Chrome went well, no major incidents to report. To go back to the AC situation, it was oppressive hot in the station for a couple days, but I would like to say thank you to Charles. He directed, Becca, thank you to Becca and her staff for going out and getting AC units, and, and again, to Robbie and his staff for, for putting them in units and securing them into the, the police department, getting those fans is super helpful, and now it's tolerable. So appreciate that. National Night Out was on August fifth. We appreciate, you know, everybody coming out. I'm going to say thank you for the citizens and the vendors that came out. Really appreciate it. One thing I want to point out, there's been some bicycle thefts in the borough this past month. Just, just make sure that you're locking up your bicycles and not leaving them unattended. Just bring them inside or lock them up, so I don't want to see something happen with your bicycles. Coresponder update, I talked to Cal, who is our current coresponder. There is a new coresponder for Adams County. I'm having a meeting with him and Cal tomorrow to iron out any new details and, and to figure out where exactly he's going to be housed. So I'll have some more information here in the future for you guys. Cadet update, Zach Saudi is, you know, is currently in a police academy. I heard from him today. He's doing a great job. He's passing everything, and, and he's doing well. So happy to hear that. One last thing, officer activity. My guys have been doing a bang-up job this month. We've had Sergeant Pruey, Officer Winrick, Officer Lardarello, Officer Howard Vold made drug-related arrests this past month. Great job for them guys. Officer Holden and Officer Winrick, they both made firearms-related arrests this month, and Officer Clunk made an overview of burglary arrests this month. So these guys are doing a great job keeping the community safe, and I can't say anything more about it. They're just great. So any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions for Sergeant? All right. Let's tackle those two motions there.
I'll make a motion to ratify the temporary appointment by Mayor Rita Freeling of Master Patrol Officer William Orth as an acting sergeant in the mayor's delegation of certain police force supervisory duties to Officer Orth effective on July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, relative to the day-to-day operations of the Gettysburg Borough Police Department.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I'll just extend my gratitude to Sergeant Orth for stepping up in this leadership role as well. It's overdue. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? That carries. In this next motion, I think we may have misspelled Mr. Stefan's name. I believe it's two E's, not an E and an A. Can we correct that in the record?
I did correct it, yeah.
Thank you. Anyone care to make that motion?
Sure. A motion to authorize the borough to enter into an agreement for consulting services with David Stefan to serve as an interim administrative consultant for the provision of administrative oversight, leadership, and guidance to the Gettysburg Borough Police Department. Mr. Stefan shall be compensated at the rate of fifty-five dollars per hour for the performance of such consulting services consistent with the terms of the agreement.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Any questions or comments for Sergeant, uh, sorry, for Sergeant Evans before we move on? Thank you, sir. All right. That takes us to the Office of the Manager and the Treasurer. Ms. Stull?
Okay, well, I'll just, I'll give a shout out to Doug Fischel and Terry DeWitt. They are part-time police officers. This month, they celebrate ten years with the borough. And for Charles's report, are you going to, okay. For the financials, we have one point seven million in liquid cash, one million in the general fund reserve, and the general fund year-to-date revenue over expenses is a surplus of just over nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars, with about two hundred and fifty thousand still needing to be transferred to the other funds, consistent with the Department four-nine-two, the inter-fund transfers out. And that's everything.
All right. Any questions for the secretary? All right. Would anybody care to get through those motions?
I'll make a motion to approve all bills and payrolls for the month as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That carries. And the last motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize Rita C. Freeling, Gettysburg Borough Mayor, to represent the borough of Gettysburg as a voting delegate and Resolutions Committee appointee at the 2025 Municipal Leadership Summit to be held in October 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. And thank you, Mayor Freeling, for representing us at that organization. All right, that takes us to our liaison reports. We'll start with Ms. Sellers in Main Street, Gettysburg.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Real quick, I was privileged to be part of the Harb discussions, so I know these are difficult, certainly legal waters to navigate, but we did come together as a group. The viable solution that was discussed around the table really was, and I, I think you have more steps to take to shore up the ordinance going forward, but I think a viable solution was, was discussed and agreed upon, and, and, and we maybe should have taken other documentative steps after that, but those discussions were had, and albeit reluctant on Harb's part, I think, to recognize those solutions. We did come together as directed. So I just wanted to offer those comments. Some good things happening in the borough. America 250 PA Adams County Steering Committee, we came together for National PA Day, which was July nineteenth, a day that it rained horribly. The only day that it wasn't a hundred degrees, but we got together with a lot of volunteers, including the Gettysburg Garden Club and Overhauled Alumni Park. So six truckloads of weeds and trimmings and vines that would, you know, were choking the park, revealed the fence finally. A group of scouts painted the fence, and the park is really shipshape and is, has been returned to a, a real vibrancy. I'm really very thankful for that. So a big shout out to twenty-three volunteers who put in eighty-seven hours of time to overhaul that park. So go get some ice cream and enjoy it in the park. that park, so go get some ice cream and enjoy it in the park. Um, we're working on the Christmas Festival, whole things Christmas Festival, as always, just ask me on that on this side. My thanks to you for your support to the Gettysburg Welcome Center, we continue to move forward on that, uh, as, uh, the Borough Engineer mentioned, and we will be looking for next steps on that. Exciting news, and my thanks out to the Adams County Community Forward Fund, a grant for ten thousand dollars to cover the culvert work that needs to be done in the rear of that property, so that was going to potentially, uh, delay or compromise some of that project, that, that culvert, uh, will be addressed in the Baltimore Street project, but that's down the road, no pun intended, but, um, we needed to do that now in order to make sure that the footing for the new building is in place, so we have a grant for that in our, our thanks. Um, on behalf of Mrs. Butterfield to report on the Steinware Bid, we continue to work with the bid, um, we're doing weed removal, uh, we reviewed the Brass Band Festival, which was, happened in June, was a wonderful, um, uh, opportunity, they'll be doing that again. Christmas Festival, of course, we also have facade program available and zero-interest loans to our commu- our business community, so please, uh, please, um, see us if we, if you, uh, if that would be help your business. And finally, Main Street is applying for Main Street Matters designation under DCED. Uh, part of that application is, uh, the need to have public meetings, we had one in July and we're having another in August. So Thursday, August twenty-eighth at ten AM at the Seminary Ridge Refectory, the public is invited to come and talk about the five-year strategic plan that Main Street has for historic Gettysburg, so I'm happy to present that to council, so that, uh, council can see those, uh, those transformative strategies that we're planning, and I would love that, that feedback so that we can make that application complete this month. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Sellers? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Carr-Gera?
Just that the, uh, Farmer's Market is, um, still happening there on Saturday, so come on out and, uh, get some great, uh, produce and lots of other things that we have at the Farmer's Market at the Rec Park, um, and that's all I have at this time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Berger, could you, ma'am?
Yes, um, the out-of-service, the old heritage land tank was demolished last week and comes on the heels of the cemetery, hill tank coming down a few weeks ago. Uh, we're still having, uh, Don dialogue with DEP on the Andrews Well and working through some permit comments. The work around the college, uh, Mark Geis has been meeting with Jim Beesiker regularly, uh, I met with them too, a couple weeks ago, just to keep them in, um, communication about, especially with students coming back. Right now, we're still working across Constitution Avenue, still about twenty feet left put in, um, as, in next week or so, we're s- still gonna be one lane on Constitution that's always gonna be open as we finish up that section. And as Chad was mentioning, uh, we are working on getting some TV, uh, video underneath the ground there to, uh, kinda see what needs to be done.
All right, thank you. Sarah, did you have anything from Judy, from, um, ACTPA or, um?
God, she didn't report anything on any of those, no.
Uh, Mayor Freeling, ACTPA?
We're still on summer vacation.
Right.
Yay! And we will be meeting in September, so I'll give you an update then.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, Patty, anything from Happy?
Nothing from Happy this month, thank you.
Oh, got pushed to the other s- page, I almost missed it there. Hey, uh, Mr. Berger, anything from Trail Feasibility? No, okay. All right, uh, we had the Fire Department's report in our folder, EMS's report was not filed, um, I think that's going to take us to elected officials' comments, Mayor Freeling?
Yes, I had a group of Girl Scouts come from Pittsburgh and visit, and they had a really lovely time, and thank you Jill for getting little packets to give out to them from destination Gettysburg, and Chris took them on a tour of the Police Department and gave them little badges. It was really fascinating to talk to them. I asked them what they want it to be when they grow up, one immediately looked at me, the first one said a mortician. No, that's a, that's a good business, and I was like, well, that's smart, and she was like that, there are a couple of people who want it to be doctors, lawyers, teachers, and the one girl said, why wouldn't it be an aerospace engineer for NASA? It was good. I took them down to the English House because they wanted to see a shell in a house, so I was like, it's right down the street, so I took them down the street and showed them a couple of things, and, um, the hospitals, the churches that were hospitals, they had a really nice time, they got a picture taken in, uh, front of the library with Abraham Lincoln, and yes, Chris, I did tell them that this used to be the county prison, and I said, then it was the library, and I said, I got my first library court here. And I also, they were staying at Camp Happy Valley, and I said, I was a Girl Scout, and that's where I stayed, they said it's no longer a Girl Scout camp, but it was, they just were really happy. And any other scout troops that want to come in, I do Eagle Scout stuff, and local scout troops come in, we can have fun. Um, let's see, I attended a Pennsylvania Workforce Development Meeting in Washington PA last week, I am on the educator committee, so I, I think it's really important that I can represent our area and discuss teacher issues. I asked Chris, Alicia, if you'd like to be involved, or if anybody knows any other stakeholders that could, would like to be, attend, or give me information to give to them. We're focusing on credentials, retention, and recruitment, and also how DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusiveness fits in with today's world. So, that was fun, and I attended a steampunk convention at the Wyndham this weekend. I was a model on your show, they had a little fashion show, and it was funny, I told them, technically you're not in Gettysburg, but I said, we're right down the road, and told them about everything they could do in Gettysburg, but I thought one of the things that impressed me most, when they started the program I was in, the man, the host said, everybody stand up, look to the person to your left, look to the person to your right, I always get that mixed up, and say something nice to them, and compliment them, and it just set off this, like, good feeling that everybody was just happy and interacted. Also this weekend, there's something called Come On Home Gettysburg, it's for, um, people who lived in Gettysburg, and it's predominantly African-Americans, where they come back, you must be aware of this, and just say hi, and this is what we're doing, and this is where we're living, but it's a way for them to relocate to Gettysburg, and it was a happy thing. And I attended at that thing, one resident, Eddie Smith's eightieth birthday, and I also attended Harold Raymond Street, that was another occasion, hundredth birthday. Harold's lived here for eighty years, fascinating story, so that's fun, I'm available for birthday parties. Anyway, and the first year walk for the college is August twenty-first, I give a welcoming speech to this New Year's student. Chris and I met with the college to go over what the agenda was with the new person, Mr. Hill- Howman, that's how he says it, Howman, his name is pronounced, spelled something else, and Chris has also met with Alex Wiltz to talk about what the parade route is and what we're gonna do, and so that's all planned. And Chris has agreed, I'm gonna hold, um, office hours again on campus, and Chris has agreed to go with me. So I think that's about it, I usually don't talk much, but hey, it's fun, don't forget, I do birthday parties. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else have anything they'd like to talk about?
Uh, I'll just mention a couple of things real quick. Um, last week, last week, uh, Gettysburg Borough, um, had National Night Out at the Rec Park, um, that was organized by Officer Winrick, um, I attended, I thought it was an excellent job. I've offered my help, 'cause I like to plan events, I've offered my assistance, um, to Officer Winrick if he is, uh, in charge of it for next year, um, to continue to collaborate with more not-for-profit organizations, uh, and, uh, first responders to make it even bigger, um, next year at the Rec Park. Um, I also wanna thank Officer Lardarello, I had a, a ride-along with him, and I would encourage any of, of, of my council members that have yet to do a ride-along with one of our officers, um, to, to, to schedule that with Sergeant Evans. That was, um, absolutely educational, um, and, um, uh, we are very, uh, fortunate to have, uh, um, all of our officers, but, uh, Officer Lardarello, uh, made a great impression on me, and, uh, we're very fortunate to have that young man here. Patriot Rail, the Gettysburg Railway excursion opened, uh, Mayor Freeling cut the rib- red ribbon, um, that is gonna be spectacular, if you haven't, I, I saw, uh, Mr. Berger there, uh, Mr. Moon, um, Mr. Gable and others, uh, from staff and, and, uh, and, and community members, and that is just absolutely incredible, if you wanna check it out, I'm sure they've got a website, Patriot Rail, look up the Gettysburg Railway, um, very, very cool, very, very exciting to see something like that coming to town, and apparently, I know it was there years and years and years ago, um, it's great to see that for our next generation.
Sure.
Residents, you can go on ride-alongs too, so contact Chris if you'd like to go on ride-alongs with the police officers.
Any other elected officials' comments? All right, I'll just add one note, um, the twenty-ninth of this month will be the overdose remembrance walk that starts at the courthouse, uh, on the twenty-ninth at six PM. Um, we process to the Rec Park, where we hear, um, remembrances and, um, celebrations of life for people we have lost to overdose. Um, the, the police are involved in this event, the, uh, former overdose task force members are involved, um, if you've lost somebody, or you know somebody who's lost somebody, feel free to come out and support, uh, those of us who will be walking, if you're looking for, uh, free Narcan, it will be distributed, and, um, this is one of those, uh, sad but also sort of gorgeous local community events where we can, um, find hope, um, moving forward. That'll take us to our second public comment section of the evening, this section is not reserved to items appearing on tonight's agenda, please, uh, use the podium, please state your name and address of residence, and please limit yourself to five minutes.
Hi, I'm Catherine Yarshuk, and I live at, um, Forty-Seven Locust Avenue, and I just wanna thank you for your deliberation, and a question came up while you were discussing the Hillcrest, um, the, uh, request for residential parking about Bed and Breakfast, and there is a Bed and Breakfast that's on Baltimore Street that I face the backside of it, and I do wanna point out that their parking lot's tight, often guests arrive and they don't know where to go, they park on our street, and then they just stay there, so some of those out-of-state cars are actually guests of, um, the Brick House, um, and there's new management for Brick House, and they've expanded, um, their tours, so I feel like some of our, our guests on our street are those that are giving the tours, and it's much more than two hours that they're doing their work. The spillover, their staff typically park on our part of Hillcrest as well, and that's like an eight-hour shift, so we have people, um, from the Brick House in particular that are, are utilize, uh, Hillcrest, I just wanted to thank you and give you that information.
Thank you. Public comment. Is anyone else wishing to speak this evening? All right, thank you all for sticking with us for a long meeting, we will adjourn to executive session.